We're recording.
Right. Good evening, everyone.
You've got a lot of room for one second.
Sorry.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 2022 meeting of the Town of Brighton Planning Board. Due to the governor's executive order, we are having this meeting via Zoom. This is a virtual meeting. You do have the ability to make a comment regarding this application tonight as part of this meeting, but also written comments can be received by the planning board secretary, who is Ramsey Bainer, at Town Hall 2300 Elmwood Avenue, Rochester 14618, or via email to ramsey.bohner@townofbrighton.org. Tonight, we will be discussing several applications which have been advertised in the daily record for this virtual meeting tonight. Prior to starting our agenda of the public hearings, we are going to have a staff and planning board discussion. I'd like to start by calling the meeting to order and asking the secretary to call the roll, please.
Okay. Altman. Altman, here. Okay, we can't hear you.
But she's. She said it, I think. I'm here. Here.
Peters. Yeah.
It's here.
Masowski.
Here.
Blaney.
Here.
Babak Snyder.
Here.
Ford.
Okay, you did call everybody, Jeff?
Yes.
I apologize. I was waiting for someone else to say here. All right, we are going to have an agenda review between staff and the planning board at this time. After that, we will approve or move, approve of the meeting minutes for December, January, and February meetings. Then we will commence the public hearings. Jeff, could you kind of take us through the various applications tonight?
The 2P O on 22, the first one is an application of Cortez Properties for Cortez Cycle Sales, 2771 Rest Henry at a Road. He's looking to do motorcycle sales and service in a building adjacent to the building that he's already occupying. And we've had a couple of communications from people in the neighborhood about about noise that were included with the package.
Good.
Next one is. Any of any questions about that one? Okay, the next one is 3P O on 22, an application of 1925 South Clinton LLC for preliminary final site plan approval to construct a 9200 square foot building and all site improvements at at 1905, 1925 South Clinton Avenue.
Have you received comments and edits to the plans, responses to the engineers? Questions?
Not to the one, not to those most recent questions and comments, but I think there's there's still things that we are looking for from them that will need to, in order. To get from them.
What is the, is there any status on the application to the architectural review board?
They they reapplied for and will be on the architecture review board this month, on next Tuesday.
Okay. Any other questions about the application? No.
Okay.
Thank you.
The next, the next is 3P O two 22. Application of Bright Future Realty and Jacob Huiyang for a conditional use permit to allow a sushi restaurant on the property at 2425 West Henrietta Road. I think we'll have a bar and it's like, it's a sushi conveyor belt and all you eat sushi place. Those previously also a restaurant use. But it's been vacant a while.
Does anyone remember what kind of restaurant it was previously, what it was?
I know there was a crab, there was crab or something in there for a little while. I hope it's a food place. But I don't remember what was before that. Any other, any questions?
No.
All right, the next one is application 3P O three 22. Application of Winton Acquisition LLC and the Old Farm Cafe, let's see, for conditional use permit to allow an interactive cafe at 3450 Winton Place. And this will have a cafe up front. They'll be doing liquor service at, on, on like a per event basis. They will be doing theaters and performances and it'll be kind of like an interactive environment all the time for the cafe.
Okay, Ken, I, I would just like to disclose that I have done work for Winton Acquisitions LLC, not in as anything that pertains to this application. I just wanted to disclose that and ask your advice on whether to sit on this application or not.
Sorry, just had to unmute. What is your current status with Winton Place LLC? Is your firm currently under contract with them?
We, we completed a a study and we are awaiting direction for, from the client on a, on a future commission. So as of this second, no.
Okay, so currently not doing work and you were not involved in this particular project. So you have done previous work for the owner of the plaza, but are not presently doing work for the owner of the plaza and had nothing to do with this application?
That is correct.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine with you sitting out.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for checking.
Are there any other questions anybody has at this point? Okay.
Lexus.
Next one.
Nexus 3P O four 22, application of Daniele SPC LLC for conditional use permit for Jersey Mike Sub Shop to go into one of the buildings at 2750 Monroe Avenue.
Okay, I think my, this will probably become clear when we hear, but I just wasn't exactly sure which building this was going into.
It's going into the back building.
The long one in the back.
Yep, and it's kind of centered on the building.
Okay. That was the only, only question I had.
Any other questions on that one? All right, the next one is 10P MB one 21. That's the application of 1950, 1966 Monroe Ave. For Quickleys, they, that, that one is tabled to the, they're postponed from this meeting for the next meeting.
Okay, so this, this, we won't call tonight, Jeff?
Yep. Yeah, there, there, there won't be something.
Okay.
Next one is 2P MB one 22. Application of Bristol Valley Homes LLC and PMM LLC for concept of you for a gas station located at 3108 East Avenue, also for Quickley's application.
Okay, and this one will, this one will be heard. There's. Okay, but this is concept.
Yep, this is a concept of you.
Okay.
Hey, Jeff, just to interpose here, I, I know she doesn't have her name on the screen, but I just want to note that member Ford has joined the meeting.
There you go.
She's listed as, I'm not sure what that is, Julie. Row.
I don't know either.
F Z G, I don't know what you got.
I have no idea. I've tried to fix this new, and here we are.
All right, good. Just wanted to note, join the meeting.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Julie.
Okay. No. Well, next.
Next and last application is all business. It's application of University Rochester owner for preliminary site plan approval, preliminary EPOD approval, preliminary conditional use permit approval at 250 East River Road. Okay, this, the public hearing is closed for this one. We've been working on drafting a conservation agreement with them. So I'm sure that'll be discussed.
All right. Any other questions from board members regarding the agenda? All right, all right, well, let's let's continue on. Our next item is to review the December 15th meeting minutes. Has everybody had a chance to look at those? And does anybody want to make a motion to approve?
All motion that we approved the minutes.
Right, do we have a second?
I'll say second.
Okay. Pam and Julie. Any, any further discussion? All right, Jeff, do you mind calling the roll, please?
Altman. Price.
Hi.
Peter.
His hand.
We make him a co-host.
Hi, I was muted.
Blaney.
Hi.
Babak Snyder.
Hi.
Masowski.
Hi.
Ford.
Hi.
The summer minutes are approved.
Thank you. We have the January 19, 2022 minutes to review. Does anyone wish to make a motion to approve those minutes, please?
So moved.
That's member Ford.
Number four.
Ford.
Correctly now, Julie. I didn't, your name shows now. I know I fixed it.
I moved by, or seconded by price. Any further discussion? All right, Jeff, please call the roll.
Altman.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Peter.
Hi.
Blaney.
Hi.
Babak Snyder.
Hi.
Masowski.
Hi.
Ford.
Hi.
Well, thank you. In the last minutes that we have, our last month, February 16th.
I, I don't think you received those ones yet, so we'll go through those.
All right, we will be moving on. Mr. Secretary, or Jeff, soon to be Mr. Secretary, have the public hearings been properly advertised that are going to be?
Yep, the public hearing was properly advertised by the planning board in the daily record of March 10, 2022.
All right, we'll hear those applications now. The first one up is 2P O one 22, application of Cortez Property and Cortez Cycle Sales for a conditional use permit approval for sales and service facility at 771 West Henrietta Road. Is, I saw Cortez name out there. Welcome. Could you join us and tell us a little bit about the application? I don't think we heard from you last month.
No, I, I put the wrong date in my calendar. I would have been on the meeting last month. I apologize for that. Um, yeah, this building is adjacent to the building we're operating in now.
Mr. Cortez, just for the record, if you would, please state your name and your position and your address.
Sorry about that. John P. Cortez, President Cortez Properties. You want my home address? Business. I'm sorry, the address of the application is, I think, is 2771 West Henrietta Road. So right now, we're currently operating at 2779. The building adjacent to it is 2771. We had a dry cleaner in there for about 15 years. He was thinking of selling the business. Covid hit. He had some very, very tough months. I gave him, I gave him a, a one month, I gave him 12 free months of rent to try to help the guy succeed, but it just didn't work out. So while that was going on, I, I had already been looking at possibly developing the land that we own behind our property. But once I realized he was struggling, I started to look at possibly being able to utilize the building that we currently own. We're simply out of room at the, the, the facility that we have now. We're, nothing's going to really change other than I'll have a little bit more room. We need more room to service the motorcycles. What happens is motorcycles have to be left inside a building, so all the bikes that we're trying to sell are in the showroom. All the ones that we're servicing have to be brought in. But then when all the bikes that you're servicing are inside the building, you have no room to work on them. So every morning, my guys have to bring all the bikes outside, stage them outside, work on the bikes they're working on. At the end of the night, they have to bring them all back in. It's very cumbersome. It, it probably takes about an hour a day just to do that. But I do need a little bit more room for display and a little bit more room to work on the bikes. We're not really adding any employees. We're just simply sort of busted out of the seams at the place we're at now. So the, I own the building. It's there. I assumed, you know, it'd make most sense to just use what we already have instead of trying to build something else.
Okay, so that would have been your, your alternative was, you know.
Possibly, yeah, I was possibly going to look into developing. I'd been speaking to Rick about what my options were about. We own that, that parcel of land right behind the two pieces of property there.
Gotcha. Okay. Yeah, I think, you know, we, we might have had a couple of comments from the public last time is, you know, why do we need two motorcycle sales places right next to each other? So I think you've explained this is really just a, an expansion of your existing business, both sales and service and utilizing a building that's already there versus expanding building that you're currently operating on.
Correct.
This is a conditional use permit application. Is there anything about the operation of it, like, can you just tell us like the hours of operation and?
Yeah, the hours are going to be the same as what we, we have now. So in the winter time, we're open nine to five, Monday through Friday, and on Saturdays, we're open nine to three. And in the summer, we're open Monday, I think Monday, Wednesday, Friday, nine to six, Tuesday, Thursday till seven, Saturday till three. The hours are going to mirror the other building. Again, it's just a, it's just another, it's just another, it's a secondary showroom. It's not a separate business. We're not going to have separate hours. I'm not even really going to man it right now. I, I'm, I'm, I'm going to probably, with the approval, I'll probably move a technician over there just to make room because we're just jammed up in the other building. And what happens with motorcycles is, is it's not like cars wants to run a lift and you disassemble them. You have to leave them there. So one technician might have three lifts because he's waiting for parts. So, you know, they tie up these lifts because you can't keep taking them off, lifting them. And if you got a front wheel off a guy's bike, you know, you got to leave it in the hoist. You can't, you can't just go move it over and stuff like that. So the good thing is, is the public's pretty, you know, the public really likes what we're doing. We do a lot of business there. Ninety percent of our business is done between March and October. And then we really die off. So, you know, over the winter time, I may put some four-wheelers in there or side by sides just to try to sell some product through the winter time. But for the most part, the majority of the, the traffic, if the, you know, if you want to call it that, is basically like right about now from where the weather breaks and it starts dying off in September and after October, you're pretty, we're pretty dormant. We're really just servicing customer bikes. We sell a few bikes here and there. But that's when I really go out and buy a lot of inventory and let the guys work on it through the winter, just to keep them busy.
John, do you see the service side of the business having different hours than the sales side?
No, absolutely not.
Okay, all right, so you don't have guys revving engines outside at seven in the morning?
No, 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 we start it. The guys get there, I think, at eight 30. I think they officially start at nine. So the only issue we ever had in the very beginning was is, what's, is it, what's the road that? Am I on center drive? Yeah, center drive.
Center, yeah.
So when we test drive somebody's bike, it's just safer for, for my guys to do it on center drive than Henrietta Road. Henrietta Road gets a little crazy. So what happened in the very beginning, some of these bikes have loud exhaust. The customers like them loud, plus it makes it safer for them. So when they go up and down the road, we, we got some complaints that the, the neighbor said it's too loud and blah, 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 blah. So we got what all, we got what the few technicians we had and we said, listen, drive slower, try to keep the noise down. You know, we got to be friends with these people. And so for the most part, I, you know, that was really in like the first month or two we were in business. Also, there's a, there's a Harding Trucking is at the end of that road. They drive tractor trailers down that road up and, up and down all day. So we might be a little louder once in a while, but the bikes don't take up a lot of space. My guys aren't speeding. They're not damaging the road or anything like that. So it's, it's really nothing that they haven't really been used to, I guess.
All right, I'd like to let the board members ask some questions. Is there anybody on the board that has a questions or comments for John?
Hey, tell me what, is there any particular brand of motorcycle that you sell there new?
Nope, we sell just pre-owned bikes. So I sell, yeah, mainly pre-owned. So we sell quite a few pre-owned Harleys. We do quite a few sport bikes. And then anything we take in on trade or anything that I might buy, but we don't do any brand new bikes.
Okay, so you'll service any, any brand of bike then?
Correct, for the most part. So my technicians are pretty well versed in Harley and the sport bikes. I don't get into like BMW and Ducati. Those are really high-end bikes. You got to be able to get certified training and stuff like that. But for the most part, the Yamahas, the Suzuki's and all that stuff, that, you know, the everyday stuff that most people ride, we're able to service.
Honda, Honda motorcycles?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Right. Karen, do you have any questions?
In the notes that were submitted, there was reference to the possibility of holding gatherings. Could you explain in the second space, could you explain what you had in mind for that?
Yeah, so what we do, and again, nothing's going to change. This is all approved through the, through the first, through, through what we're doing right now is, once or twice, we have like, we have like a, an event where we invite, like, we usually do it in the spring. We haven't done it during Covid, where we'll basically, you know, you know, have food and some beverages and we just invite people at the beginning of the year to see the showroom. We do some giveaways and stuff like that. It's all inside. It's all contained. Like last, when I did it before Covid, I had a food truck. So I bought everybody lunch that came and stuff like that, that kind of stuff. No loud music, no, you know, you know, no concert or anything like that.
Call it a sales event then?
Uh, it's more of, um, I mean, I, I want to say we might have sold it. Yeah, I think we sold maybe a bike or two last time, but it's really more of just, you know, we'll go on Facebook and we'll invite people to come and see the showroom and see what we're all about and, you know, we'll have, we'll do discounts on parts and stuff like that. Nothing, nothing crazy though. No, no like rock concerts on the outside or anything like that. No problem.
Anything else, Karen?
No, not at the moment. Thanks.
Thank you. Jason, any questions?
I'm good.
All right. John, anything else?
No.
Yeah, you know.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah. Regarding the situation with the neighbors complaining about noise, are you, is there any kind of silencer, if you want to call it that, something that could be temporarily like clamped onto the, the tailpipe to help cut down on the noise when your technicians are taking the bike out for a, you know, a little test drive?
You know, I'm not aware of it, but it's worth looking into. Again, these aren't, aren't long rides. I mean, this is a ride down the street that lasts, the whole ride probably lasts 25 or 30 seconds, but I will definitely look into that. If that's something we could do, I'm, I'm sure it's not a big deal, but I, I don't know of one.
Yeah, John, we did see, I know you kind of talked about receiving complaints in the first couple of months, but we received a lot. We received a few from a lot of people in the neighborhood about excessive noise. Motorcycles driving without helmets and then just a lot of like engine revving and stuff outside of the building. And it seems to be that it's still kind of an issue for the neighbors.
Again, I can't, I can't make it perfect for them. So we, we have to, when we're working on a bike and we're, we're trying to fix it or, you know, repair it or whatever, that's sort of what has to happen. And in the summertime, my guys will work probably and leave the doors open when they can. Again, the, the other building's not going to make it any worse or change anything, but I, I don't really know what else what I could do because that's the, that's sort of what we're doing. Unfortunately, some of these people have loud mufflers on them. But again, we're doing it between the hours of nine and five. Usually it's not at six in the morning. It's not at 10 o'clock at night. There's really not a, there's not a, I don't want to mislead you and tell you there's a perfect solution for that other than we try to do the best we can not to be, you know, to be respectful to the people around there. Now, you're not going to make everybody happy. But I don't, I don't know what else we do there. It, it's not, it's not real safe for me to have my guys test drive these bikes down Henrietta Road. You know, I, I, I just don't want them to do that. I mean, even if we, if we ride them in my parking lot, they're not going to like it. You know what I mean? So that's unfortunately, the, the one, I would imagine the few people that are complaining, they're probably not going to like much of what we do, but yeah, again, we have to fix the bike that, that's there and the whole reason these people put these loud exhausts on them is so that they can be heard on the road. So we'll try to minimize it as best we can, but I, I, I can't lie to you and tell you I could make that go away 100% because there's no way to do that.
If I, Bill, if I could step in here, maybe. Maybe Mr. Cortez, you're not aware of the standards. We're getting a conditional use permit under the town code. But the standards imposed on the planning board before it can grant a conditional use permit are that it finds that the proposed use that you're seeking conditional approval for is in harmony with the neighborhood, is in harmony with the use of the streets surrounding the property, is not going to be detrimental to the neighborhood. And so when I hear you say there's not much you can do, it sounds to me like you're making an argument that this is not an appropriate place for your motorcycle repair shop and that the planning board should not grant your application.
That's not what I'm saying. I don't.
Well, that's, that's what I'm telling you what I'm hearing you say.
Okay, well.
And I'd like to finish my comments before you interrupt me because you've interrupted just about every one of our board members, Mr. Cortez. So I think listening is a good skill you need to work on. So what I want to tell you is this, as Mr. Fresh has indicated, we have received a number of recent complaints about your operations. Can you tell us in a typical day, how many times your technicians are driving motorcycles up and down center drive?
Okay, well, first of all, I apologize if I've interrupted anybody. I haven't done that intentionally. And secondly, I, I do not believe that we're not compatible with the neighborhood or whatever. But in, in answer to your question, again, through the months of March and September, I would probably say that they're going up and down the road four to six times a day, probably working on four to six bikes a day. After October, it's going to drop quite a bit. It's, you know, once it snows, we're not going up and down the route, the road really at all. So I, again, it's not, let's put, if you guys are getting, I'm not personally getting those complaints. So in the beginning, I heard of a couple of them. I haven't heard of much since, so I apologize for. I haven't heard of much since, so I apologize for being ignorant to that. But again, that road that my, that we're taking the bikes down has tractor trailers going up and down it more than I have motorcycles going up and down it. And the reason I know that is because they drive on my property every day. So and those guys drive fast and I haven't, I haven't done one complaint on those guys, but the point is, is I don't know. Other than the bikes are louder than the trucks, the reason I was saying that I don't know how much I could do about it is because I, I can't make the bike any quieter. Now, the one gentleman asked me if there's a, like a, a sound detonator that can be put on it. I'd be more than happy to look into that. And, uh, you know, I, I don't have a problem buying, buying them i- if they're available, but all I was trying to say was is we've been doing a very good job. I've been there four years. Okay. We provide a very good service to the community. We work with the school down the street at MCC. I saw a lot of motorcycles and we take care of people. We do all the right thing. Uh, we've been in business since nineteen seventy-five. So I'm, we're all about customer service. Uh, I made the building look really nice. I repaved the pavement, the front and the back. So I, I've improved that property tremendously. So if you got any more advice as to how I could better, uh, serve that neighbors, I'm open to it, but I can't, I can't make it a, you know, it's not a park. I can't make it perfect. So that's what I was trying to say was is I'll do whatever I can do. But the building that I'm asking you to give me, it's not going to change anything as far as the amount of business I'm doing is not going to change. I just need a conditional use permit on this building. So I could have my employees work in a better environment, environment and have more room. And, and I'd have more bikes on display. Uh, it's not gonna, it's not like we're going to go from servicing eight bikes to twenty bikes. It's right now, we're just crammed up and it's just going to give us more room. But again, I'm open to looking into whatever I could do and I, and I'll, I'll call my people tomorrow and, and, and see what ideas that we have on what we could, because if it's that much of a problem, I don't want to be a nuisance to the neighborhood. I'll, I'll have no problem looking into doing that, but I, I can't, you know.
So, um, if I could just ask another couple of questions. First, um, I want to just invite you to take a look at the town website under the planning board packet. And you will see the correspondence that the planning board has received on your application from the neighbors who have complaints recently about those activities out of your property. So I, I'd invite you to do that. Um, you mentioned the speed of the trucks. How fast do your technicians need to drive those bikes to properly test them?
Um, I think, I, I think up and down that street, we should be trying to stay twenty-five, thirty miles an hour, I would think, twenty-five miles an hour. You know, if they're going faster than that, I would need to know about it. So I could tell them not to, if they needed to go faster, they'd have to go on Henrietta Road. You know, I, I don't want to miss, I, I, you know, I'm not at that facility all the time, so I can't vouch for the speed that they are driving every day. But if, if I'm aware that they're driving any faster than that, I could easily fix that because they work for me.
Some of the complaints that the town received did, uh, complain about excessive speed and danger to pedestrians and children on center drive. Can you tell me, are you familiar with a business called Cycle Stop?
Yes. Yep.
And, and they're located on West Henrietta Road?
Yep.
And they do cycle repairs as well as sales? Yes?
Yeah. Yes, they do.
And, and they're not next to a, a, a local residential street, so they test their bikes when their techs take them out on West Henrietta Road, right?
Yep.
They also. You don't want to do that.
No, it's not that I don't want to do it. It's just, it's, it's, it's just dangerous. And not to say that we don't ever go down there, but I think having that street there makes it easier for us. Now, if you tell me that you don't want them to do that and we have to go on Henrietta Road, then that's a discussion I'll have with them. But I, I guess we didn't think it was that big of a deal. Because again, that road has eighteen-wheel trucks that go up and down that road on a regular basis. They're a trucking company. So I didn't, we didn't think that our motorcycles that weigh three, four hundred, five, six hundred pounds in relation to what those trucks go in and out of there pretty good. They're going as fast as my bikes, if not more. So I, I don't know why anyone would think the motorcycle is more dangerous than what's already been going on there. So I didn't, never thought that our bikes would be a problem. But if they are, I'll have to, I'll address it.
Bill, thanks for indulging me here.
All right. Uh, let's see, John, uh, Julie, do you have any questions?
I do not. Thank you.
All right. And David Bader?
No.
Okay, Pam?
No, no, I don't think so. Not, that hasn't been already addressed.
All right. Okay, uh, Jeff, I wonder if, if you have any, any?
A few more. Um, are there any improvements you need to make to the inside of the building and like, and specifically anything that might need a building permit?
As of right now, no. Uh, what I'm going to do is, if, if you guys grant me the permit, I'm going to use it for a while, see how it goes. If I feel like I can grow my business, um, then I would do that. I mean, we own the building, so I definitely would want to update the outside of the building at some point. Um, but if I did have any plans, I obviously I'd have to come back to you and you know, I know the drill with that one. I'd have to get some drawings made up and right now I just need more space. I'm really, it's, it's really going to allow me, if you, if you grant me the permit, it's just going to allow us to work in a more comfortable environment. That's the, it's not going to be any more bikes going up and down the road. It's not going to be anything other than we're just busting out of the seams. During our busy, during our busy time, it's, 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 it's just tough. We got a lot of bikes, you know?
And have you, have you been in contact with the fire marshal at all to make sure that the, it meets the standards, the fire safety standards?
As far as the, the second building?
Yeah.
Uh, no, I would imagine once, um, uh, once I get the permit, he'll come in there and look at it. That's what he normally does. He'll do a walkthrough and tell me if there's anything I need to do. He comes in all my buildings once a year and, and does a walkthrough. So I'm used to that. And just, you know, I want to just say one thing. I, I've been operating, you know, I inherited this stuff from my father and I've been doing this now for over thirty years. I've never had a problem with the town. You guys know anything I've told you I was going to do, I've done. I do, I think I do a pretty good job of keeping my buildings looking good, the property looking good. We've updated our buildings. Um, Cortez has never been a problem to, to the town of Brighton. So, you know, if, if there is a little bit of a problem with the sounds of the bikes, you know, I'll do what I gotta, I'll try to do what I can do to help that out. And if we have to go on Henrietta more often, we'll do that. Um, I just didn't think it was that much of a problem. But if it is, you'll have to address it. I, I don't want to keep upsetting the neighbors, that's for sure.
Sure.
But if, you know, if, if I, if somebody would call me and like, like if somebody from the neighborhood called me, you know, I, I, I could have already, you know, maybe addressed it a little bit and prevented a couple of them.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Uh, Bill, I'm sorry. I just have one more, if I may.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Cortez, uh, is the service that is going to be done from this location the primary function of this location or is it more ancillary to the sales that you do?
It's really both. So like the front part of the building, I would use for showroom space. And then in the back, I'd have room for, you know, a couple more lifts and a technician type of thing. But again, I'm not adding any more people. I would just take one of the people, one of the technicians out of my other building, give them a couple of lifts, just so the guys can spread out. And then at the end of the night, instead of us having to, we'd be able to stage the service bikes in the back of the building over there, which they wouldn't have to be pulled out every night or pulled out every morning. Let us work on the bikes, then pull them back in. That, that's a big inconvenience. You know, if you have, you know, what happens is these people, their bikes break down, they can't drive them. So we might have fifteen bikes in the shop. But we're, you know, but that might take, take us two weeks to get to them or a whole week to get to them. And at night they all got, they all got to be put in the building because you can't leave them outside. Well, you can't, in my shop, there's not room to have fifteen bikes in there while you're working on the bike. So you got to take all the bikes out in the morning, put them outside. Then you got to worry about it raining. You know, it's just, uh, we just need the space to be able to move around. That, that's really the main purpose of it. You know, the front part, I'll have more room for overflow of bikes. Like if I buy it, if I see bikes I want to buy, I'll have more room to put some over there. Um, and store them. And then as we sell them, I can bring them over, that type of thing. But it's, it's, it's not going to do anything different from a disruption standpoint.
All right. All right. Thank you, John. All right. One last call for the board members and town staff. Any other questions or comments?
No.
Not seeing anybody. All right. Uh, thank you. Let us then move on to, uh,
So we see if anybody in the.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah. Yeah. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone, uh, on the meeting tonight that cares to address this application? I forgot about that. Sorry. Any raised hands?
In, if you, if you are interested in addressing the planning board on this application or as we go through the other applications, please either use the raise hand feature in Zoom or turn your camera on and physically raise your hand and we'll, we'll recognize you when it's your turn.
Jeff, you see anybody?
Nope, not seeing anybody.
Okay. All right. Thank you. We'll move on to the next application, which is three P O one twenty-two. Application of nineteen twenty-five South Clinton LLC. Preliminary final site plan approval, uh, to construct a ninety-two hundred square foot retail building and related site improvements and a conditional use permit approval, allowing retail building to house twenty-three hundred square foot Starbucks cafe with a drive-through facility. This is a property nineteen oh five through nineteen twenty-five South Clinton Avenue. Uh, Paul, I believe I saw your name. Are you here to join us?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Good evening.
Good evening.
Paul, Paul Calucci, on behalf of nineteen twenty-five South Clinton LLC, uh, agent for the applicant, uh, joined tonight by Evan Gaffel with Costage Engineering. Uh, Evan, uh, may be able to contribute to some, some portions of this application should questions arise specifically to uh, some of the components of the site plan application we submitted. So the application that was submitted, uh, as, as was read, we, we are seeking preliminary final site plan approval for phase two of the nineteen twenty-five South Clinton Avenue development. Along with conditional use approval for a Starbucks cafe and a, an associated drive-through, uh, with that restaurant use. The plan that you have before you that, that Jeff is showing us right now is consistent with the concept plan that was reviewed with the planning board in January. Uh, if you recall, we went through a number of alternatives that we came up with through some workshops with, with town staff, uh, and ran through those in January and the preferred alternative that came out of those workshops was presented to planning board. And we received some comment on the concept plan that we incorporated into this application. Uh, the plans that were submitted include phase two site, uh, phase two utility plans, grading plans, landscaping plans and lighting plans. Uh, the basis of the overall preliminary overall is the previously approved preliminary overall site plan, which is shown in dashed format here. Uh, we are one hundred percent consistent with the previously approved preliminary overall, with the only exception being the location of the drive-through, which was modified to meet, uh, the, the restaurant use, the, the Starbucks cafe use queue requirements as well as mitigate any site conflicts and avoid any, um, drive-through queue that would back up into circulation movements. Notable components of the site plan is a connection to the southerly adjoining, uh, which is the Brookdale, uh, Senior Living Center. We are proposing to make that connection. We are proposing to complete the signal improvements at the southerly access point, which aligns with the existing signal servicing the shopping center on the east side of South Clinton Ave. We are, um, completing the internal site circulation drive that would connect the existing northerly access opposite Route de Ville that is currently servicing the Doodle Bugs daycare facility. We are proposing fifty-nine parking spaces, which is in excess of the required five per thousand. Uh, that is been adopted under the incentive zoning regulations. When we did the incentive zoning approvals, we, we use a overall ratio for, for the entire development at five per thousand, rather than look at each specific use in and of itself. Um, we, we, we do not need to do that for this application. So currently we're proposing fifty-nine parking spaces, which is in excess of the required amount. Uh, we are within the thresholds of the previously approved traffic impact study. When we did the traffic impact study in two thousand sixteen, we took into consideration eleven thousand six hundred daycare facility, fifty-one thousand seven hundred square feet of medical office, ninety-two hundred square feet of retail, of which there was a twenty-five hundred square foot coffee donut shop with drive-through. And then in addition, uh, forty-five hundred square foot high turnover restaurant. So essentially we are, we are within the thresholds that previously proved traffic impact study. We do not anticipate any negative impacts associated with this specific use, the, the Starbucks cafe and the associated drive-through. When we had the concept review in January, there was a couple minor, um, items that were, we were asked to consider. One was we, we were showing a garden wall along the drive-through queue lane that is, that is adjacent to the South Clinton Ave right of way. Um, the consensus from the board was that they preferred not to have a wall uh, between the, the, the right of way and the building. So we, we removed that and we developed the landscaping along that edge of the building. Uh, I'll let Evan, uh, speak to that. Should there be any questions relative, specific to landscaping? In addition, we were asked to model, uh, turning movements for the egress movement out of the, the drive-through, uh, egress. And we did submit that along with our application. We modeled a, a pickup truck with a landscape trailer, just kind of looking at what would potentially be a a worst case vehicle that, that wanted to navigate through the drive-through queue. And I think we've demonstrated that we can successfully, um, make that egress maneuver without creating any type of conflict or, or hazard, uh, relative to that, that movement. Um, you can see on the overall site plan, we've modeled the fire truck apparatus through the site and it's consistent with the previously approved preliminary overall. So I believe we've, we've, uh, submitted a complete application. We, we hope to be able to move forward. Um, as a note, I, I know you asked a question relative to the status of the architectural review board. We did submit updated elevations. I anticipate meeting with the architectural review board next week. Um, those updated elevations are different than what is in your packet that was submitted, just given the timing of us, um, receiving feedback from the architecture review board and having to make this submission deadline. Of note, um, you know, the, the biggest concern that ARB had was uh, wanting to have as much vision glass facing the South Clinton Ave right of way. And I think our updated elevations have responded to that. Um, we're, we're, um, ultimately trying to balance the fact that it is the back of the building facing the right of way. And, you know, given the nature of this inline tenant, uh, most of their back of house will be, you know, towards the east side of the building. So, um, we've developed upgraded elevations. We hope meet, uh, with approval from them. And, um, you know, I anticipate that we would likely, um, be able to address any concerns that the planning board has and, and try to wrap up all our approvals in April. Um, we did receive some communication from the, from the, the town staff. I think as of this morning, we checked online and I pulled the comments to the application. I reviewed those. I don't anticipate needing to go through those in detail. And I pulled the comments to the application, I reviewed those, I don't anticipate needing to go through those in detail. Having read through them, I don't see anything that is challenging for us to respond to. And, and work with town engineer, town staff. And, and you know, hopefully respond to any questions you folks have tonight, I know you have a lengthy agenda, so I'll, I'll cut it off at that and you know, answer, hopefully be able to respond to any questions you have.
Okay, thank you. Can I ask, Jeff, you scroll through the drawings, I think there was one drawing that kind of highlighted the, the portions of this that would be built as part of the, the current phase two.
Yeah, Brandon's controlling the screen share, so if you can get us.
Oh, thank you, yeah. Okay, I see. Right. Paul, you the connection to the signalized intersection. And that, that's, that southern access will include a drive, drive lane down in front of the new building.
That's correct.
Okay, and you are going to go ahead and make that connection over to the parcel to yourself in this early phase as well.
That's correct, yeah, as, as, as shown here, we are keeping the previously approved connection and where we have a, a, a signed easement for cross-access to them.
Okay. All right, thank you, and then just for everybody's recollection here. The access drive opposite Route de Ville. And in front of Doodle Bugs, that connection is already completed, as is the connection to the west of Doodle Bugs into the adjacent property to the north, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, all right. I think the only other modification you wanted to point out was you did relocate the dumpsters. That were proposed for the front of the building in the islands. To a, a position on the side of the building.
That's correct.
I think that's. And the parking spaces to the front are now parallel versus being perpendicular. And you still have enough, you still have adequate parking that exceeds the code.
That's correct.
All right. All right, I, I don't have any further questions, I guess. I would ask the, the board, Karen, do you have any questions or comments?
This time, thank you.
Thanks, David Fader, do you have any questions or comments?
I have one. Isn't it gonna be hard for the handicapped people to ever get out of those spaces with all the cars going out that way? I mean, they're gonna go past the dumpsters and then out that little passageway to escape. And the two handicap people will just be sitting there forever.
Yeah, we, that's a good comment, Dave, we actually added two additional handicap spaces to the south of the building. Just given the, trying to balance for all the tenants. And we had previously shown two handicap spaces or accessible spaces on the west parking field where the crosswalk is shown. And we, we have more than what we would be required by code, we did that just with trying to have a little forethought of being able to balance accessible parking for all the tenants that, that are there, so. I think that we've, we've tried to do it as, as best as practical. You know, one of the, the modifications we made. When we went through the, the different alternatives we reviewed was to, to try to pull the building a little bit further west in lieu of nose-in or ninety-degree parking, we went to parallel parking. So that I could give a little bit better pedestrian with a little more ample hardscape. On the west side of the building and then also be able to pull the building slightly away from the right of way to, to try to improve some landscape features along the, the, the drive-through lane, so. I think, I think we've, we've done as responsible a job as we can at providing accessible parking, but if there is, you know, a suggestion the planning board had, I'd be happy to. Pardon me, Dave?
Could you, could you point out the other spots, I, I, I don't see them?
I, I wish I could, I don't think I can have control, but there's, there are two which are in the western parking field and then two in the southerly parking field.
There is a, there is a striped crosswalk from the two in the, in the west field across to the, to the ramp in front of Starbucks.
Those are the, I know about those two, those are the two I was thinking, where are the other two? Oh, way over there, okay, yeah, so the good ones, the long walk, okay.
All right, thank you, David. Julie, do you have any questions or comments?
I do not, thank you.
Right, Jason, how about you?
I'm good, thank you.
All right. Delaney?
Oh, I, I feel like I'm always the troublemaker in this one, but I, I feel like I've come a long ways. I think last, or last time you presented, Paul, you talked about Starbucks being a really good anchor tenant and I appreciated that comment. About the type of business that this could attract. I, I guess I still just have one question, with this drive-through, I know I've struggled with the drive-through being parallel to the road. I think I've accepted that's how it's gonna be. I know that there is other examples like the Tim Hortons out in Bushnell Basin that has like a brick paver drive-through instead of a blacktop drive-through. I don't know if anything like that is possible, but I think something like that really improves the appearance of that roadway. I don't know if it's, you know, with this length queue, if something like that is possible with the weather, if that's, you know, I, I don't know, but I do think that when you drive through that Bushnell Basin, Tim Hortons and see that drive-through along the road, but they've done the brick pavers in it, I think that does make the drive-through look a lot nicer than just a typical drive-through along a road. I guess my other question too, I'm, I'm not a traffic engineer and just making sure that the turn, turning right out of that drive-through lane, that that's like logistically possible, because I know with Whole Foods, we thought that that Starbucks drive-through was fine. And it's like the only thing I feel like I hear about on that Brighton Facebook page is how people can't make that turn in radius. Um, so just wanting to make sure that if people come out and turn right around that corner, that they're not gonna have any issues making that turn and I feel like there's been a lot of grief about that, that other Starbucks drive-through, so just wanting to make sure that we don't find ourselves in the same situation.
Yeah, those are, Bill, if I can just respond, I think those are two great comments. The, the latter one, we did submit a turning exhibit of a pickup truck with a landscape trailer that shows that movement auto turn navigating into the drive-through and making that right turnout. That was a comment that came up in the workshops from, from Ramsey. And we, we studied that and that was submitted with this application. The, the example of a brick paver surface. If we flip to the landscape plan, you can see the screening that we're proposing, which is, you know, to allow a balance of visibility to the building along with a nice edge of, of trying to appropriately screen headlights and vehicular queue along the, you know, from the right of way, I don't think you would see the surface of the drive-through from the right of way. Just given, given that it is about three or four feet elevated from South Clinton Ave. The only time you would see that surface is actually when you're actually driving through the drive-through lane. We've tried to screen that, if you're interested, Evan can run through, you know, what, what is proposed and how that was developed. But, but specifically we tried to pay attention, we knew that this was a point that the planning board felt, you know, very strongly about and what could we do to, to help mitigate the drive-through position as best as practical, and I feel like we've come a long way through those workshops. And really tried to pay attention to appropriate screening and generous landscaping to provide a nice, a nice buffer, but allow visibility to the, to the building.
Okay. I think I'm, I think I'm satisfied with that answer.
Thanks.
Thank you, Pam.
Yeah.
And I'm just trying to figure out. Is, John, did I get to you?
Uh, no, and then just to, to back up for a minute regarding what David Fader said about the accessible parking. And I wonder if anybody thought about trying where, where you have the parallel parking along the, the front of the building, if anyone tried considering the diagonal parking. And perhaps making some of those diagonal stalls to be accessible ones. To make accessible parking a little more convenient. That's, maybe it's worth consideration, but that, that's all I have to say.
I, I do recall that, you know. Let me, the, the, the parking in the front was originally perpendicular. And our concern was that the, the amount of sidewalk in front was really down to the bare minimum. Five feet wide. So I'm, maybe, maybe another option is whether or not a handicap space can be one of those, one of those parallel spaces. But Paul, you are saying that the two that are on the west side are really there to serve you know, your first two tenants from a location standpoint and then your, your third tenant or that multi-use tenant space is being served by those handicap spaces on the south side.
Yeah, that's correct, we tried to balance it, you know, just given the, the reality of, of where the tenant entries will be and we felt that adding an additional two on that south side was, was appropriate to consider, even though it's, it's not required by code, we felt that it was appropriate to put them there.
John, I don't know if that is your concern.
I mean, yeah, that's adequate, I, I, because I know the, this, this stalls are the parallel to the front of the building. You really can't make those accessible because you'd have the accessible driver, you know, opening their door into, into traffic, that's, that's not gonna work, so anyway, that, that, that's fine, thank you.
And just one point to note, we thought about eliminating the parking altogether along the front of this building, and this was something we discussed in the workshop. But then we get into the reality of people are people and if I didn't have kind of a, a pull-up lane where someone can do a short-term, you know, grab and go, like run in and grab their coffee from the pickup window. People are just gonna park in the driveline. And we see it in our classes all the time, so we, we kind of balanced that and said, you know what? If we don't give it to them, they're just gonna park right in front and that's gonna create more conflict than you know, than, than not having it, so that's really where we, we settled on, and I think I shared this at concept was we intend to, to strike those as short-term like you know, five-minute parking where someone can just run in and, and grab something and not have to block that driveline.
Right. Jeff or Ken Ramsey, does anybody have any questions or, or comments for Paul?
I have, I have a couple shorter ones, then some other ones, but well, is there gonna be a generator for the building?
No.
Okay. Some, something that, is the seating outside the proposed Starbucks area? Is that gonna impede the view of people coming out of the, the drive-through lane, like are they gonna be able to see if there's cars coming or not?
Yeah, that, I saw that comment, I think, you know, ultimately I are, my, my inclination is no, my, the, those, those cafe seating areas are usually you know, pretty sparsely populated, there's, there's a, going to be a fence, which would be an ornamental aluminum. You know, thirty-inch-high railing, just so people are protected from the, the drive-through egress in the, the driveline. Just to create a, a small edge and it's, it's not a barrier that would impede vision. You know, the, the speeds and the way people travel should be slow, they're, they're all approaching a stop movement. So I don't think that there is going to be any conflict, but we'll, we'll think about that and you know, if there's something we can do to alleviate it. We'll, we'll, we'll try to adjust, but you know, the, the position of the Starbucks on the end cap and the, the desire to have that type of activity in the plaza, have that outdoor engagement has always been something that we strive for. So I don't want to lose it, I think it adds to the overall experience. And I think just given the, the nature that each vehicle is approaching a stop movement, I don't foresee a conflict.
And are you gonna, is the cross-access season gonna be revised with the new alignment of the driveway?
No, it, it aligns with the previously approved preliminary overall and the filed easement.
Okay, hold on a sec, and then the, I think the bigger thing that is there's, there's a lot of topsoil that's on the property and it's been previously mentioned that, that's kind of a big issue since it was supposed to be resolved six months prior to the previous approval for the, the previous space two approval. So how are you gonna, is that gonna be removed shortly, is that gonna be moved to the space, what are you planning to do with all that?
Yeah, Jeff, that's, I mean, that's a hundred percent weather dependent, you know, I did have our contractor go out there and shape the aggregate piles that are there. Just given the, the timeframe, we're in the, the snow and mud season. To try to, to do anything with that aggregate at this point is gonna create more disturbance than it's going to alleviate anything in the topsoil. It, you know, given over the conversations we've had, you know, from late October and, and through into January, I last spoke to the board. We're, we're approaching the construction season where people need topsoil. I envision that, that, that is going to in the, the desire and the need for topsoil is going to increase as we get into April, May, when people are looking to place topsoil, I've talked to our site contractor who's obligated to take that for me. And you know, we're envisioning that that's gonna commence in, you know, as soon as the weather improves and we can get into a position where we can remove it without creating, you know, mud and, and a hazard on the roadway and we can, we can place it at locations as we're getting into construction season.
Okay, and I know Ken, at some, some of the previous meetings, Ken was very, spoke very strongly about the topsoil being removed or like spread out something before any piece, any like additional approvals were granted, I don't know if he wants to kind of speak to that, but I think it's kind of an, it's overdue and I think that, that Ken would certainly like to see it removed sooner than later.
Yeah, I have to echo that sentiment, Paul, it's been going on for a long time and gives us a number of complaints too.
Yeah, I certainly am aware that we've been talking about it, I actually was able to have a conversation with, with Supervisor Malley this afternoon and just kind of explain you know, overall where we are with the development and talked specifically about those two items. Gave him, you know, our, our sincere intentions of how we, we plan to address it. Clearly, you know, mobilizing and, and moving forward with phase two. And being able to bring the entire site into what we're showing on this set of plans, including. This phase-two landscaping plan that shows stabilizing the remainder of the site, shows removing the topsoil. Obviously, we're gonna use a fair amount of that topsoil on this phase to to complete the the landscaping that's shown here. And it's just, it's truly, it's truly just weather-dependent, guys. I mean, I wish I could go out there in. January, February and and make productive use of it. It just, it it just, there's nothing good that would happen in in that that time of year.
Can you jump it on?
Yeah. Paul, I did have a chance to speak with Supervisor Malley. His impression from. The conversation he had with you was that that topsoil was gonna be gone by May or in May. So I guess my question, you you indicated that you'd like to come back to this board in April and get your approvals. Tell me why this board shouldn't table this out till the May meeting. And then see how you've done with following through on your commitment. I mean, you've had more than one construction season. To remove that topsoil, and it just hasn't happened, and that's very important to the town, to see that topsoil. Those topsoil piles removed, so. Makes sense to maybe wait until the May planning board meeting and then to see how you've done. Your thoughts?
My thoughts are that that. Anything that is gonna delay the successful mobilization for us to commence phase two. Is not going to help me move forward with. You know, getting those aggregate piles spread and removing the topsoil. So can, I mean, my goal is to try to develop this property. To bring increased businesses to this corridor. We've talked about it. The world experienced a pandemic. We've been fighting to keep tenants alive in our plazas. You just heard from Mr. Cortez that, you know, he gave free rent to someone for a year, and they still suffered. I'm losing tenants across the street similarly. I just don't want to ignore the fact that. We we haven't purposely tried to ignore the the requirements. That have been placed on us. We've been focusing trying to keep tenants alive in all of our plazas. And. The sooner we can move forward with this phase two of the application. The entire property is going to be brought into compliance. As it's shown on this set of plans and. You know, to say you want to hold me off to mobilize, to get rid of some topsoil. And take half a million dollars of aggregate and spread it over dirt and to see how I do. You're gonna, you're gonna push me out of a construction season with a tenant delivery date that I have obligations to, and I'm gonna lose a Starbucks deal. And then I'm gonna have. No new business in the town, and you're gonna be staring at the same empty. Future development site, so. It just doesn't seem like a partnership that, you know, we strive for with the town of Brighton. It seems like you want to put obstacles up. And see if I can. You know. Play Russian roulette with you, and I don't want to do that, Ken. I wanna, I wanna, you know, we've been at this approval since October. And I've worked through workshops, I've gone back and forth with Architecture Review Board. It's just been. Beyond my wildest expectations of trying to get this second phase approved. And I'm just not interested in, you know, looking at more obstacles and ways that you can make things more difficult for us. I just. I don't know what else to say other than. You, you know, it's this, it's it's the same thing we've talked about over and over again, and it's weather-dependent, and it's hopefully done as part of this phase.
Paul, with with some respect. The word that comes to mind is the Yiddish word chutzpah. As to your comment that it's the town that's putting up obstacles. Because from my perspective, it's the developer who has created this situation. You've had, as I said. Two construction seasons to fulfill your promises. If there's any delay here that is resulting from. The developers' failure to remove that topsoil, it is of your own doing, not the town's doing. You made a promise, you haven't fulfilled it, and it's been, I think, nearly two years now that you haven't fulfilled it. And so I don't think that your statement that the town is trying to put up obstacles is anywhere close to reality. I think it's your. Your employer who has caused this obstacle, but but where I'm really stuck. Is with squaring the idea that topsoil cannot be removed from the site, and yet. The earth will be good enough for you to do all of the site work necessary to construct. This particular development, to go into the ground and. Create your parking and your parking lot and your building and your building pad and all of that, you can do that. But you can't remove the topsoil because it's too wet. So I'm I'm having trouble understanding how those two square up. And and I would appreciate more recognition that this is not a problem created by the town. It's a problem. Created by you and your client or your your employer, actually.
Yeah, the, I guess just to the timing. The the overall site work wants to commence as soon as we we get into more favorable weather. And and that's that typical construction season starts in April. Weather-dependent, we all know we get snow and we get, you know, heavy rains in April, and it it just may not be conducive to be out there, but certainly may. It is our intention to commence removal of the topsoil. As soon as we can avoid making a significant mess with with trying to get it out of the site, Ken. The the other reason that, you know, the activity has been delayed is, you know, we've we've had. Dozens of of. Deals that we've been trying to work with medical. I talked a little bit about this with Supervisor Malik. You know, we're competing on a new build with second-generation space that's that's. Come vacant in Clinton Crossings. So we we just haven't had. A good. Idea of of what the the medical component could be. And that causes the pause, and we had an idea of wanting to spread all of that aggregate out. And we thought we knew where we wanted to put all the underground infrastructure in, and we were ready to do that, and then. We had a bunch of different variables come at us, and we said, geez, you know, let's just. Kind of pause and not put stuff in the ground that we're gonna have to tear up. Let's not spread the aggregate that's gonna get contaminated with the subbase that's there. And waste, you know, about a half a million dollars that it cost us to excavate that and process it. And and let's, let's come in with the piece we know, this, we have a Starbucks deal. We think that that's really gonna help us generate additional interest in this corridor. To continue to strengthen the South Clinton corridor. And the timing is lining up that, you know, hopefully we can gain approval in April, because I know that this board wants to have. ARB. On board with with what we're we're proposing for the exterior features, exterior facades. And, you know, given approvals in April. I anticipate commencing construction in May, and the, you know, the entire. Development is gonna be back under construction, of which topsoil will be a component where it's it's removed. Other than that, which we need for the remainder for landscape stabilization on all the areas. And then the aggregate will get placed. So it's really, it's simply a timing thing. It's not a, you know, ignoring your comments. I know you brought it up from November through January, and it just wasn't feasible to be out there doing anything productive in those months, and. That was. You know, really. More of a, just a timing thing, and we anticipate that we're able to make. Progress and and bring this site into what you would like to see, what we would like to see, you know, in this this coming construction season.
Oh, let me ask you one question about your topsoil. You you say that the your your site contractor is obligated to remove it from from the site. Were they always intending to take it and restockpile it somewhere else and sell from there, or they? Or are they gonna just use it themselves? You have a sense of that?
Yeah, obviously, I mean, we. We have way more topsoil than we ever imagined, just given that there was. A bunch of buried topsoil mixed in with shotrock that was dumped here. And then when when we, when we got into processing all that. We stockpiled it, segregated it, and the the topsoil. Ultimately, will be placed in. Projects that are within, you know, a local. Area. We don't want to haul it, you know, beyond what's reasonable, but they're identifying projects now where there's topsoil needs. And if they can't take off what we need, they're going to remove it to one of their their gravel pits. And and stockpile it there for future use. So we have a plan. It's it's simply just a timing thing. I anticipate that. We'll we'll make significant progress on this in in May and through. Through this construction season where, you know, ultimately, when we finish Starbucks, we have a site that is stabilized as shown on this. This plan. There's, there's a little bit of grading to do. Most the, all of the mass earthwork is done, but there's, there's some fine grading that wants to be done and and, you know, better. Drier weather than, you know, during the winter months. Along with that fine grading. Will be placement of of Mirafai fabric and then placement of the aggregate. In removal of the topsoil, including that which is shown for for stabilization, creation of the bio-retention areas. And then. Stockpile that which would be required for the remainder of the site in the back and a much smaller pile.
All right. You guys had. A chance to ask questions.
Uh, one more I have is there's, I mean, the whole site has a stormwater plan that was, that was good for the entire phase, and. This morning, what's gonna be installed utility-wise or stormwater-wise with with this to make sure that it's. It's working with the SWIP that was previously submitted.
If you flip back to the phase-two utility plan, that will show you the utilities that we are proposing. Everything is consistent with the previously approved. Preliminary overall utility plan. The Stormwater Management Facility that services the entire development was put in and sized for the full build-out. So the utilities that are shown here, Jeff. Are what we are proposing. We're proposing to add the bio-retention areas that service the the parking areas that are proposed as part of phase two. And those connect, as you can see, to the storm sewer system that discharges into the stormwater management feature. We're proposing to bring sanitary to service this building. And then we would extend future sanitary across the site. We do have. A sanitary sewer easement that was brought to the right of way down the main drive-out. Opposite Route of Ville as part of phase one. And we we would extend the sewer eneasements for for future phases.
There's gonna be size for the potential future phases, or are you putting in what you need now?
Everything is sized to accommodate our our full build-out.
All right, you all said Jeff.
Yeah, what's that?
All right, other planning board members, any follow-up questions or comments for Paul?
Hey, this is John regarding the topsoil removal. Could could it be agreed that it be gone by the end of the summer? You know, say. Late August, early September, would that? Be okay?
Yeah, John, if you're asking me, I would say absolutely. You know, and and. We don't want to delay it anymore than just getting into remobilizing back on the site. Having appropriate. BMPs in place. Best management practices, so we don't bring silk and and mud out onto the roadway. We'd have a stabilized construction entrance. We. Appropriately be able to handle that topsoil so that it isn't creating any type of. Erosion or sediment controls or sediment concerns. You know, by by the, through the end of summer, fully anticipate that 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 is. Significantly reduced to the point where it's the only thing that's left on site is that which we need for our final stabilization.
Okay, thank you.
Other board members, other questions? All right. And to move on to public comment. This is a public hearing. Anyone in the attending tonight that wishes to address this application? See one hand up, Jeff. You see.
Uh, see Stopwell, and then we'll get to RB Craig after.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. My name is Caitlin Stofel. I'm the Executive Director over at the Gables of Brighton Priority Life Care Community. We are a senior care community that would be the one that would receive the driveway that goes to the plaza. I actually have two women here who are part of our resident council committee. We have our president, Anne, and our secretary, Elise. They did write a letter to the town and received over thirty signatures from our residents. So they are here to advocate for the board to approve this project for various different reasons. So I'm gonna pass it to them. They are representing eighty-plus senior residents that reside in Brighton. So this is Anne.
Good evening, Anne.
We are thrilled, number one, that Starbucks will be our neighbor. Our main concern is the construction of a sidewalk on Clinton Avenue. Because we have senior citizens who are taking, going across Clinton Avenue. In wheelchairs and risking their lives. We have an incline where the. Stopstoplight is up to the the Gables, which is formerly Brook. Brookdale. We are now the Gables of Brighton. And the main concern is the sidewalk. We desperately need one. I know years ago, there was an accident on a rainy night. Someone, a car hit a woman who worked in this area. And with very serious injuries, and I have seen some of our residents cross that road. There's no way they can get down to the traffic signal. It's all, and they'd have to be in the road. So that is our main concern. We would certainly love to have a construction of a sidewalk. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments, Anne. Anyone else?
And I just have one other comment on behalf of the other residents as well. And Paul, I'm so sorry to to add your woes to the topsoil. But when the project first started, they added a path from our property to that property. That was never completed, so that path right now, if my residents walk down it, does end at the topsoil pile, so they. You know, we have a beautiful walking group, and we have nature trails on our property, and new residents may start going down that path, and then it's just a mountain of dirt. So I know it's your goal to to remove it, you know, throughout the project, but we just want to advocate that that's a priority as well, but. Again, our biggest thing is we'd like the sidewalks to be included as part of the project, and we love the idea of being connected and being neighbors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming out to the meeting. Jeff, do you see anyone else?
Yep, there's RB Craig. I just asked him to me.
Good evening.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay, yes, I'm standing outside the library for the wifi. Yeah, I, my name's Russ Craig. I live in nineteen eighty-one South Clinton. Yeah, I, uh, my name's Russ Craig. I live in nineteen eighty one South Clinton, directly in front of the Gables. Um, I own the landmark house there where I've lived for sixty five years. I have a problem with the driveway connecting the project to the Gables. I'd like to see it moved as far. Let's see. To the west is possible. Right now, it's going through a patch of woods. It is part of, uh, well, let me put it this way. Years ago, there was a swamp behind the Gables. It was wetlands. I since learned it was a vernile pond because eventually it would sometimes dry up. This is the only patch left and it's should be considered a wetlands. As far as I know, the little woods there has not been changed in a hundred and twenty years when Mr. Prossus bought the land. So it's kind of a a bio niche, if you will. It would be a real shame to destroy it, not not to mention all the wildlife and birds. I mean, it destroyed every all the other trees on the site which were grown up since the mid sixties, but this particular patch of land that you have the the driveway through is is kind of special. I mean, I'd like to see the whole thing moved, like I say, to the west to connect up. As as the person outside the Gables closest to the project, I have no problem with the dirt piles. They they don't bother me in the least. And the other problem I have is you guys have a about a thousand gallon tank of diesel fuel, about a hundred feet from my landmark house. I'm not not too happy about that. Um, there's also a big pile of tires there which uh, we're holding down tarps over the dirt. I'd like to see those removed. Last year, they were full of mosquitoes. I think one more investigation into where the the road is going would be nice. I have no problem with a sidewalk in front of my house. That's about all I have to say. Any questions?
Oh, thank you. Appreciate you coming out and making the effort to participate. Thank you. Okay. Are there other residents interested in speaking, Jeff?
I don't see anybody else.
Paul, let me just ask you if I could. The quite I guess the the top soil is is a concern when when that's gone, the the alignment of this, is this in a of the road, the access road over to the Gables, is that in a a driveline for a future or a future driveline of you know, the parking and circulation?
Yeah. I think I'm unmuted.
You're you are. You can hear you.
Yeah. Yeah. If you go back to Jeff, if you page back one page, you'll see the the preliminary overall. And so that is aligning with with the future driveline. We we reviewed this location of that connection extensively when we went through the preliminary overall approval and during the incentive zoning process. I I would very much like to meet with Ms. Stofel very soon, just to discuss a couple of things. One, the connection, because we we would be on their property doing some construction work. So we'd wanna we'd want to discuss that with them, walk it with her when the weather is is appropriate. And look at any any particular impediments that they see. We believe we've we've chosen that location just for an appropriate grade for access to them. As you can see on this site, we do also, we have installed the the path that borders our western property line. And if there is some way for us to allow your walking path to connect to that walking path, I'm happy to 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 make that connection. We'd love for you and your residents to use that path to access the plaza. I do intend to make a connecting link from that path to this Phase Two so that you know, both the doodle bugs daycare folks can take their strollers out there that they do and and access that path. The residents to the west of us and the apartment community can access the site. And then residents of the Gables could use that. We are we are committed to and will be constructing the sidewalk improvements along South Clinton Ave, which hopefully that that makes you makes you pleased. We we want the residents to have safe access along South Clinton to traffic signal. We we completed half of our sidewalk improvements last year along Elmwood and and we're committed to committing to completing the rest of them along South Clinton this year.
Is there is there a timeframe for that, Paul?
Yeah, currently, I think it's June thirtieth is what we we requested and the town board approved.
Any other folks who are joining us tonight that wish to address this application?
I don't see anybody, Bill.
All right. Thank you. We we might, Paul, during deliberations, bring up a couple of the points that Mr. Craig brought up. So stick around if you can.
Absolutely. Thanks, Bill.
All right. Let's proceed to our third application, which is three P O two twenty two, the application of Bright Future Realty Group LLC. And Jacob and I, not even going to try your last name, Jacob, as agent for a conditional use approval to allow sushi restaurant. At twenty four twenty five West Henrietta Road is this, this is the application here, right?
No.
Yep. Yeah, is there anybody on? Please raise your hand or turn on your video.
Is is there anybody from the general contractors here, TCT? All right, Jeff, with with your concurrence, I'd like to move to the next application and we can certainly come back to this if someone representing this application does does join us.
That sounds good. I don't see him on.
If we if before we move on, could we just see if there's anyone on the Zoom from the public who wants to make comments on this project?
I know, certainly. Yes, this is a public here. This is application, Bright Future Realty Group. This is sushi restaurant at twenty four twenty five West Henrietta Road. Just wondering if there's anybody here interested in commenting on this application? All right, we will ask again later in the in the meeting, if there's anyone joins us, that can hopefully help us understand a little bit more about the application. All right, we will move on to application three P O three twenty two. This is the application of Winton Acquisitions LLC as owner and the Old Farm Cafe, let's see, for a conditional use permit to allow for an interactive cafe at thirty four fifty Winton Road.
Hi, yes, I'm here.
Good evening.
Yes, my name's Eric Johnson. Thank you for having me and and good evening. I'm the Executive Director of OFC Creations at thirty four fifty Winton Place, one four six two three. Just to be clear, OFC Creations, which has a property in the Windsor Place Plaza, is going to be the owner and operator of this cafe. So the cafe, the Old Farm Cafe, is going to be the DBA of the business, but it's owned and operated by OFC Creations, which is already a tenant. Just a little background, OFC Creations has been around since two thousand and five, but two years ago, we were able to open the OFC Creations Theater Center in Brighton despite the obstacles of the pandemic. Since opening in two thousand and twenty, we've been able to welcome over five thousand students through our doors for classes and camps and thousands more as audience members for our shows. The facility has been utilized by outside groups for weddings, dance recitals, and business meetings. Even with the pandemic, we were able to expand our staff from just me to now six full time employees and twelve part time employees. Today, the purpose of of me being here is OFC is sharing our plans for our next big endeavor, which is the Old Farm Cafe and dining experience. The cafe is next door to the theater in the Windsor Place Plaza. The theater is suite B eight and the cafe is suite B six. This new suite that we're discussing is B six and is a twelve thousand square foot building that will be split up into three main segments. The front will be the Old Farm Cafe, which is approximately three thousand square feet, and I'll come back to that. The middle will be a rehearsal studio and classroom for our ever growing theater programs. And the back will be our scene shop and storage facility for making and storing set pieces and seating items and making them for our shows. The main part of this proposal is obviously on the cafe. The cafe will be serving coffee, handcrafted caffeinated beverages, breakfast and lunch food, but at this time, there are no plans for ongoing alcohol. It would only be on a per event basis that we are doing full time at the theater already. The big difference with this cafe is from like a chain coffee shop is that the entire cafe is an immersive barnyard experience. Think Rainforest Cafe theme, feeling like you're outdoors but indoors the whole time. The coffee shop will be theatrical experience to attract regular customers, but with the new unique nature of the cafe, we expect to attract tourism from visiting groups. In addition to OFC's current employees, we will be hiring two full time employees to run the coffee shop, along with wide range of part time employees. Our most active time will be on the weekends when we are closed to the general public and let community groups and individuals rent the facility for events. At that time, we would have upwards of ten employees working. And that being said, also, our current plans allow for up to a hundred and fifty nine individuals in the cafe and up to seventy nine in the rehearsal studio. We obviously don't expect to have that many people on site during normal business hours. That would just be for special events. The cafe is open to the general public eight AM to nine PM, Monday through Thursday, and eight AM till two PM, Fridays through Sundays, with those special events on the weekend evenings. There's over seven hundred and fifty parking spots in Windsor Place, and although we filled a ton of them during theater events, there's no way we would ever run out of parking. Deliveries will send around to the back. We have one of the two, the only two main loading docks in Windsor Place Plaza connected to this facility, so that won't be an issue. And trash is fairly minimal that will connect through a waste management company. There's no chemicals being dumped. And although we'll have weekend events, nothing will be outside that will distract traffic or impact other businesses. That's pretty much my whole presentation, unless there's questions I can answer.
Thank you. Could I ask, Brendan, could you scroll to the floor plan of the the business there and maybe just enlarge it a bit? Thank you. Eric, could you talk just a little bit about, so the the front portion that is going to be the cafe is what is hatched on this on this plan?
Yeah, it's changed a little bit. We have been prepping to submit the building permits once we got through this meeting. Believe it or not, the architect that created this for me and did a fabulous job, their their business went out of business. So I we we switched architects to Chris from Nine by Thirty Design, who was the same architect who did our theater. And he's revised this slightly. It it is very, very similar to this. But yes, that front section is about seventy five feet from the entranceway for the cafe. The office has slightly shifted a little bit smaller, but that gives us that flex space in the middle. And then the back is the set building and storage facility for all of our pieces we use at the theater.
And could you just tell us a little bit about the what you're serving and how and how it's prepared?
Yes, exactly. So the cafe kitchenette area that you see in the front right top corner, that is, that's the whole area. So it's it's espresso, it's handcrafted, you know, ice drinks, very much Starbucks Dunkin' Donuts types. In terms of the food, we are using a Turbo Chef oven, so it is ventless. There's no need for vents or anything like that. That's the only way we're cooking, cooking, quote unquote, cooking things. But it is an industrial size that if we do do a big party with a hundred and fifty people, it can sustain, you know, a large party or it can just do the normal day to day operations.
Okay, right. Um, and you said that your your operation would just use pretty standard totes or dumpster for trash removal. And you're not serving outside. You're not looking at this time to expand that to the outdoors.
Nope, there's there's really not too much room in front of the building, so it would just be an indoor facility. And the idea is that they come inside and they feel like they're immersed in something else, so it wouldn't make sense to bring anything outside.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna ask if other board members have questions and I'm gonna base it on who I can see and that's John Osowski, do you do you have any questions for Eric?
Uh, no, no, I don't. Not at this time. Thank you.
All right. Jason, you have any questions?
I'm good as well.
David Fader?
Nope, I don't have any.
All right, Karen Altman?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Julie Ford?
I do not.
Okay, Pam Delaney?
I don't have any either.
Okay, Eric, you've got everybody completely educated. All right, Jeff and Ken Gordon, either of you have questions for Eric?
Yeah, I have a few. Uh, this is not going to be connected to your theater space, right? There's gonna be no connection between the spaces.
Correct. There's actually another tenant in between, but we've coordinated with them quite a bit in the past and and they're on board with this project.
Okay, um, for for food, I mean, you say it's gonna be like a small kitchenette, but serving a hundred and some odd people, sounds sounds like a lot of work. How are you gonna do that from the small space you have there?
So that, um, so it will be pre made items that'll be prepped. That's why we also have that flex space and why we called it a flex space in these drawings rather than a rehearsal studio with the size of that space. And even going even farther back, we have areas that we can, you know, store items, you know, have extra refrigeration units back there to store the items we need to and use that as kind of overflow space depending on the events. We just, you know, right now, we have so many events that we are turning away from the theater. We don't have an open date until January of two thousand and twenty three at the theater. So we're turning away birthday parties and different things that are looking to come to us. And so we think this will be a popular endeavor, but we just don't know exactly what type of events and what type of food they'll want until we actually get into it.
So imagine that a lot of a lot of it will be stuff that's prepared offsite and you have it at the
Correct, yes, or prepared that morning or, you know, not not at the exact time that people are already there.
Okay, thank you.
Ken Gordon?
Uh, just a question about service. Will there also be takeaway service utilizing paper cups and other disposable products?
Yes, there will.
Okay. So the only, you know, what the Ken's question gets at the issue of, you know, do paper products or cups or plastic get outside and find their way into the parking lot? You're 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 probably thinking that people who come will take this and bring it with them and they're not going outside and eating and not having a a place to to put it in a refuse container.
Um, you know, that's that's a great point. At the theater, I can say that, you know, there's so many activities in that plaza. There's a dance school, there's the martial arts facility, there's a bunch of things that are happening. There has been trash that has has gone into the parking lot from those different tenants. But I think that the new the new But I think that the new, the new ownership of the plaza has has, um, already put in some new, pieces to help alleviate that going forward. There are some outdoor trash cans out there, um, and obviously we'll have plenty inside, um, to encourage it and and hopefully keep that as clean as possible.
Okay, thank you. Oh, one last call for questions or comments from the board or town staff? All right. Is there anyone attending tonight's meeting that cares to address this application? Please raise your hand or turn on your, and wave your arms around?
Not seeing anyone.
All right, Eric, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, uh, move on to application 3PO422. This is the application of Daniele SPC LLC for a conditional use permit approval for, to allow for a Jersey Mike sub shop at 2750 Monroe Avenue.
Uh, Bill, can we just check with Holly to see if she needs a break?
Certainly, yeah, it's a, we've gone a little while, it's almost nine. Does anybody need a break for?
I could take five minutes if you guys wouldn't mind.
Five minutes, we will, we will postpone or we'll adjourn for five minutes and convene at 9:00 PM.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. I'm back. So whenever you guys are all back, go ahead. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's, uh, see, do we have everybody back? Give it 30 seconds. If you're back, kindly turn your cameras on and just let me know that you're here and I'm
I'm back, Bill. This is Jason.
Okay, David, John, John's not quite back. Ken's here. In his law office. Pam's back. Julie is here. All right, I'm sure John will be right here. All right, this is application of 3PO422, Daniele SPC LLC for conditional use permit for Jersey Mike's sub shop at 2750 Monroe Avenue. Mr. Goldman, are you representing the applicant tonight?
I am, I am. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Gary Goldman. I reside at 59 Branchwood Lane in the town of Brighton, have an office at 1900 Bausch &amp; Mahn Place, um, and are representing Daniele SPC LLC, the owner and developer of the Whole Foods Plaza. Uh, with me tonight are, uh, are Amy Deick, who is our traffic engineer, and I believe he will be joined by Danny Daniele, who is attending another meeting, but is aware that we are up and ready to go on this and is gonna try to break away and and join us. Our application this evening is for a conditional use permit for an approximately 1,123 square foot, uh, Jersey Mike's sub shop. As you know, food uses require a conditional use permit, uh, from the planning board. Jersey Mike's is looking to lease the space, um, in line on the 22,250 square foot building behind the Starbucks and the two, uh, additional buildings. I don't know, uh, if you want to put up, uh, Jeff on page three of Amy's, submission, there is, uh, a site plan which does, uh, which will show where the Jersey Mike's is supposed to go. Uh, the property is categorized by the town as a community shopping center. So instead of going use-by-use, as we do with Brighton Commons to calculate parking, it's a flat five per thousand. We did provide, um, a parking calculation relative to what Jersey Mike's would typically need if they were freestanding or dealt with individually. And that's what, uh, Jeff had up initially, so maybe we can go back to that if, uh, if that's what you want to do. Uh, there's, there's a plan you, I thought you'd be able to see the Jersey Mike's in there, but I guess not. I see it on the plan that I have. It is, um, it's located right in the middle, uh, in the area that's got the carve-out. So that is, that's where the 1,123 square feet would be located. In terms of parking, we are fully compliant with code. So there is no issue to talk about there. The only issue that real, we really could identify that anyone would want to, uh, have some information on uh, would be whether the introduction of the restaurant use would have any impact on the traffic analysis, which was done by SRF, uh, for the town board and for the planning board as part of your approval process. And in, in that regard, uh, SRF, Amy Deick has provided, uh, a letter and and an analysis that I believe has been shared with the board. Uh, and that analysis indicates that based upon current methodology, our trip generation is actually projected to be less than was previously estimated, as part of the, uh, as part of the study. So that having been said, that analysis would allow this board to complete its seeker review, make a determination, uh, that the proposed application is within the parameters of the prior seeker, posit, uh, excuse me, findings which were made by the planning board. And the board could make a determination of consistency with the prior environmental findings made, and that would essentially close out the seeker process relative to this application. Just like to speak to a moment, uh, I believe there was one comment letter that we received from Charles Malcolm on this, um, and we do maintain that all prior approvals were legal. I believe that the town would, uh, ascribe to that position as well. Uh, there is no legal impediment whatsoever to this board considering a conditional use permit application. There is no stay, there is no injunction. There is nothing to stop this board from considering this particular application. We did have the opportunity to review, uh, the staff report and, uh, questions were raised with regard to the operational aspects of it. I did, uh, a bit of research to find some answers to the questions. And the answers that I have, uh, for you, I'm gonna follow along. I didn't want to, uh, weave it into my presentation, make it sound like it's something that we created from whole cloth. But, uh, the use itself is what's termed a fast casual, uh, restaurant, uh, which is a combination of people coming in and people sitting down at the site. As pointed out in the parking exhibit, uh, we have the capability of, uh, of having 16 customer seats in here. One of the, one of the other plans I saw showed something like eight. So there it, there's probably some flexibility in terms of what that number is going to be. And there is also going to be, uh, takeout which is available. The proposed hours of operation, uh, the, the numbers I have are listed as 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Although, as I took a look at the, um, websites, the current Jersey Mike's locations have 10 to 9. So I think we're probably building in some flexibility there. Question was raised, will there be delivery service or curbside pickup? Uh, delivery service is not part of the Jersey Mike's program, but as you know, pretty much everyone is doing delivery services. And I would imagine the delivery service would be available as a result of this. In terms of any curbside pickup, I would anticipate that there may be a couple of spots which are designated as spots. I don't imagine that we're talking about any sort of pulling up in front of the building and having people pick up. We're not gonna encourage that because that would be disruptive to any traffic plan. With regard to the management of trash, uh, my understanding, although I don't remember, is that we will have, uh, a dumpster in the, uh, in the back of the site and they would share in the use of the enclosed, uh, dumpster area. We do not propose to have any liquor being served at this, uh, at this location. In terms of deliveries to the site, for the site itself, uh, those would be limited to the hours of 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. I know there's an issue with regard to deliveries and the like, um, occurring between the hours of of 12, 12:00 midnight to 6:00. So that will not be a part of this. And we're not talking about operating any trucks on site during that, uh, during that off-peak period. I skipped a question. Uh, there will be a grease trap. Uh, it'll be located in the, uh, food preparation area and will go, uh, down into the ground. I assume there will be an oil separator, it would be something that would be dealt with, uh, as part of the building permit process. Um, with that, I know, again, you, you have a long evening and I think you have a lot more to go. So, uh, I'll kind of cut our presentation there. Um, and I will be able to, Amy will be able to answer questions on traffic. And if Danny is in, he can answer some questions, uh, as well. So, uh, with that, we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. That we've, now that we know where it is in the plaza, could you kindly scroll back to the floor plan?
Okay. That's the parking requirement plan has the floor plan on it. The one that's entitled parking requirement on top, I saw, oh, right at the beginning.
Everything is taking so long to load for some reason.
Jerry, you, there, this application does not request any outdoor seating?
No outdoor seating request. Outdoors would require a separate special permit from, or a condition use permit from the, uh, planning board.
Okay. All right, so can, can you just generally tell us what, you have two, two doors in? People call ahead, do they order ahead? Do they order online? Uh, and then are all of the above? They'll come in, pick up their sub or have it made right in front of them? And is that in a kind of a watch-and-make-it, or do you order it and then go sit down or stand to the side?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Danny Daniele. Uh, I, I was able to join the call. Sorry, Jerry. Uh, so to answer your question, it's very similar to
Dan, if you could give your address, please?
26 Mary Hill Lane. And, uh, so it's a very similar situation to a Subway. I think we've all been to a Subway before, so you can watch them make their sandwich. You can have them customize it just the way you want, uh, just like, uh, a Dibella's or when you go to Wegmans, you stand in front over there and you can see them making everything. Uh, it's the same type of situation, uh, as any other sub shop. You can call in advance and pick it up, uh, or you can sit down, watch and make it and eat it there or take it out.
Okay, so all the ingredients are in line the way that some of these others are?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and then to the left of, in this floor plan, is your, is your in-house seating? And to the back is, I suspect is all behind walls and that's all of your food prep and your refrigeration?
That is correct.
Hmm, okay. Okay, just wanted to get a sense of the layout. Thank you.
So relatively compact space. But it serves, serves it well.
Yeah. I guess, you know, I don't really have a lot of questions. Let me just go to the rest of the board and see if there's questions. Okay, I'm looking. Ramsey, you don't get to ask a question. Jason, you have any questions?
No, I'm all set.
All right, David Fader?
Nope.
Uh, John Osowski?
No, I have no, no questions. Thank you.
Uh, Pam Delaney?
I don't have any questions either.
Karen?
I'm all set, thank you.
Alright, Julie?
I have no questions.
Alright, well, it was altogether too easy. Um, Ken Gordon, how about yourself?
Uh, so I don't know if this is for Jerry, Amy, or Danny, but uh whoever you designate to answer this. Um, one of the concerns with the plaza has been traffic patterns within the plaza itself. Particularly with relation to the drive-through access to the Starbucks building. And the need to make uh several turns if you enter at the traffic light to get into that drive-through lane. With the addition of Jersey mics, I don't see anything in the traffic analysis that addresses. Internal plaza traffic conflicts. And I'm wondering what the plans are to improve the internal traffic patterns within the plaza. So that further traffic problems do not arise.
Uh, it's a good question, Ken. This is Danny speaking. Uh, thanks for bringing that up. I know everyone that's been through Starbucks has the same concerns. Uh, o- over the past few months, especially since they opened, uh, they've had some logistical problems, uh Starbucks with some of the other sites. Uh, and their apps where when you order coffee, uh, you're supposed to go to maybe the Brighton location at Twelve Corners and it actually sends you. Uh, to the, the Brighton location uh, here near uh Monroe Avenue, the Whole Foods Plaza. They're correcting that, so you should start to see that subside a bit. Uh, the other uh concern has been uh the turn. If you, if you make a turn into the, the project from the first left, if you will, coming from the town of Brighton. Uh, it gets a bit uh tight to make the right-hand turn into there. Uh, so what we're looking with uh the. Uh, that was. Uh, nevertheless, we're gonna, we're widening that turn so that a car can make that turn a lot easier than you currently can. Uh, so that should be done hopefully, uh, you know, midsummer. Uh, now that the weather's starting to crack, we can work with the concrete and, and repatch that. It's nothing significant, uh, but it's enough to make that turn a lot safer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Um. Jeff, how about yourself? You have any questions?
Yeah, um, Jerry runs in a couple of different amount of seats. This, this looks like it shows sixteen seats and you had a. Mine says fifteen over the top, but a few of the things spaces, but there's sixteen seats sewn. You, you mentioned a different number, like, do you know how many s- seats are proposed?
Well, you know, I, I think that there's some flexibility in their design in terms of how it's going to work out. Uh, like I said, I've seen, I've seen numbers as low as eight and as much as uh, as much as the sixteen. Uh, is I.
This site is designed specifically for sixteen seats. I'm sorry, Jared. I know it, we, we've had different iterations, but. The one you're looking at is the exact layout that it's gonna have, so, I mean, unless someone decides to remove a table, uh, they're, they're planning on sixteen actual seats.
Yeah, I do.
Other, other questions, Jeff? You're all set.
No, I'm set.
Alright, oh, one more time for the rest of the board. Other questions? I guess for staff, um. Ken and Jeff, um, as we, as we proceed to. Um, look at different tendencies in this plaza. Um. We're probably only gonna be seeing those that require a conditional use permit. Um, are you? Are you asking that every time a, a tenant comes in that the? Actual tenant compared, compares both traffic and parking requirements to the original application that was approved?
Only if there is a need for board review or board approval by one of the towns. Uh, statutory boards.
Understood, okay.
And um, uh, and given the uh, the proposed use, they tend to generate a little bit more traffic. Sure, so we did wanna just verify that, Bill.
Okay, I, no, Ramsey, I know that over the years we. We kind of with like, uh, Twelve Corners Plaza, we've kind of gotten into a, a routine of. Really, no matter who the, the tenant is there, uh, we do look at the. You know, a parking study for each tenant as they come in. Um, and just wondering if. Will we be doing the same for uh all tenants here or just conditional use applicants?
Are you parking study or the traffic study?
Um. Well.
I think it's gonna be application by application for the most part, but we do need to, as we go through this. Check to make sure that we're uh consistent with the findings that have been made by this board and the town board. And whatever information that we'll need to ask will depend on the application.
Sure.
Uh, traffic was a big issue, so that's why traffic was asked for this application.
Understood, understood.
Good, can I address the parking for a minute? Because, because unlike Brighton Commons, which is considered to be a neighborhood. Shopping center, this is considered under the code to be a community shopping center. And instead of going use by use in terms of the parking ratio, the parking ratio is fixed. At five per thousand. And that is a code, uh, that's a code standard and we, we do meet the code standard. Relative to that, we may have some uses in a center of this size. Uh, which are gonna be lesser traffic generators and some that are gonna be more. So for you, uh, for centers which under the code definition says are generally fifty thousand square feet or higher. We work under the fixed parking ratio as opposed to the uh, as opposed to the use by use, so. Uh, Mr. Chairman, we, we wouldn't necessarily be analyzing use by use throughout here because. Frankly, un- unused by use, it's less than five per thousand for most uses under the code.
Understood. Understood. Alright, thank you. Um, okay. One more time for town staff and town planning board members, any other questions or comments?
If I have one, if I add one thing, if you have no other comments before you close.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, I believe that the only written comment that we have received. Um, is written comment from Mr. Malcolm. I don't know if we have anybody who is going to be. Speaking at the public hearing. If we have, if we, if the only input that we have outside of the application. Is Mr. Malcolm's letter. Um, I understand the town staff comment is that uh, town staff. And would like the town staff and town attorney to review uh, Mr. Malcolm's letter, and if in fact the board is inclined to do that. We would request that the public hearing be closed, uh, when you go into deliberations and then. Uh, and then proceed with whatever analysis the town staff and the town attorney wishes to, uh, which is to make. So that's, that's just a request on our part, but if there are comments, we would reserve the, want to reserve the right to uh respond to them.
Alright, thank you, Jerry. Alright, this is a public hearing. And I'd like to see if there's anybody in the audience attending tonight that cares to address this application. Jeff or Brendan, let us know if you see anyone.
I don't see anybody.
I'm not seeing anybody.
Please raise your hand and zoom or turn on your camera. I think, seems we know we there, Bill.
Alright. Okay, thank you, we'll, we'll move on. Um, Jeff, I just want to reconfirm. That uh. Applicates, so. Is this the, this is the end of the public hearings? I just want to confirm that application ten P. NB one dash twenty-one nineteen fifty and nineteen sixty-six Monroe Avenue has been tabled until April.
That's correct, yeah. That's correct, yeah.
Alright, so at this time, uh, we have a couple of applications, but the uh. The public hearings are, are done for tonight.
Do we want to check to see if anybody uh was appearing on the sushi restaurant?
Yeah, good, good call, Ken.
Yeah. Is there, uh, let's see, what application? Yeah, that's your patient, three PO two twenty-two, uh, Bright Future Realty Group and. Jake, Jacob Yang. Uh, for a conditional use for sushi at uh twenty-four, twenty-five West Henry Road. Has, has anyone joined the meeting representing the applicant?
And please raise your hand or turn on your video.
It doesn't look like it.
I will ask also one more time if there's anybody in attendance tonight that cares to address this application.
Does that look like it?
Okay, alright, thank you. Alright, let's move on. Uh, first, uh, our next application is for concept review. This is a two P and one twenty-two application of Bristol Valley Homes LLC. And P E M M LLC uh, for concept review. Property to repurpose the property at thirty-one oh eight East Avenue. For use as a convenience store and gas fueling facility.
Doubleheader night for me, Jerry Golden, on behalf of the applicant. Uh, P E M M LLC, uh, home address is fifty-nine Branchwood Lane of the town of Brighton. Business address nineteen hundred Bausch and Long Place in the city of Rochester. Uh, here this evening representing P E M M LLC. It's a family business that owns and operates Quickly's Convenience Stores. And gas fueling facilities. If anyone saw the uh. Uh, the Rochester Business Journal this past week, uh, they were front page and, and had a nice article about the nature of their operations and how they. How they operate. Uh, here tonight for concept review. Uh, for the property at thirty-one oh eight East Avenue, which is located just south of the uh, of the Brighton. Uh, fire hall near the corner of uh, East Avenue and Linden or Elmwood comes in as well. Uh, Friendly Home is to our south and behind us. If I have my, if I have my directions oriented properly, yeah, it looks like I do. Um, with us tonight on the application are Ken Barelli, who's a principal. And Lou Taranoli, who is the development coordinator uh, from Quickly's. And the project engineer, John Chiraba from LanTech is also here with us. The subject property is a historic property. Uh, many of you may remember uh, its previous, one of its previous uses and its most. Uh, noted use was for a uh, gas station most recently. Um, on this particular site. So with that, uh, there have been visits which were made by the project. Uh, applicant to the historic uh, preservation commission relative to the building on the site or relative to the site itself. And the overall development of the site. Um, I've had a number of people personally who, over the course of the years, have come to me looking to do something on the site. All of them wanted to do some modifications to the building and that was something which wasn't necessarily well received. Um, I would say that from what I understand, I wasn't at the HBC meetings that. Uh, what we have here uh, was well received by the HBC and Lou can speak to that. I believe that Ken is the attorney for the board. Uh, and may want to weigh in uh, relative to that. There's also been a visit with the conservation board on this, that John Chiraba made, and there were modifications to the plans based upon that. The property itself is zone B one, which is an office category. And I kind of think that that zoning may be a placeholder because nothing really fits that description quite as well. You've got. Uh, a skilled nursing facility, you've got a fire hall, you've got everything else around it. But nonetheless, because it's zoned that way, we would need a use variance from the zoning board of appeals and. Uh, in accordance with town's normal procedure, uh, we are visiting the planning board for not only with concept, but. With some form preliminary uh, site plan application before we go to the zoning board, but we. Feel confident that we have the dollars and cents proof uh, to be able to establish uh, use variance on this site. Um, we're here basically to introduce the project. And to seek any comments that the board can offer relative to it, understanding that, of course, the building itself is uh, is fixed. The uh, the building that we have. Our intention is not to change a footprint uh, to ameliorate some on the exterior look. We have received Everett's uh memo to Ramsey, which was part of the packets uh, which you have seen. Um, while there's work to do before we do a preliminary application, uh, we didn't see anything that we would consider to be a, a blockbuster. Or a problem uh, in terms of Everett's comments um, on the site. Um, in order to give a little bit better perspective on all this, I'm gonna turn it over to Lou Taranoli at the uh, at Quickly's. Who can kind of give you an orientation as to how they arrived at the site, what their process has been so far. And uh, and what the intention is going forward. So with that, Lou?
Thank you, Jerry. Uh, my name, Lou Taranoli, I'm director of real estate and development for Quickly's. Um, we're located in Avon, New York. As Jerry said, we're a family-owned business. And uh, we have identified this property as a natural part of extension for our growing um, convenience store footprint. To take you back to the start of the, the, the project and, and with our approvals, we did start. And put this application in front of the historic preservation commission. We did work with them over, I'm, I'm gonna say two or three meetings. And had some discussions with them on how the building should look and try to put it back to a, a state that um, everyone could be. Happy with and wa- and the way it looked in the past. And I could say that the um, preservation commission is very happy. With where uh, the renderings have ended up and how the building will be. Looking to emphasize Jerry's point. We are not looking to expand the building, move the building. Uh, the building is of just, just under twelve hundred square feet. Uh, we will be using that footprint. To remodel the exterior of the building and you have the renderings in your package. And again, that was. A function of our meetings with the historic preservation commish- mission and um, headed by Mr. Ludwig and his team. And uh, that's how we resulted in what the building looks like today. In addition. Uh, as part of those meetings, we originally had proposed uh, three uh, fuel dispensers, but at their request. We, we were asked to reduce those, so we reduced the uh, dispensers down to two. We were also take. Able to have a canopy that's less than a thousand square feet. It's roughly nine hundred and sixty-eight square feet. We have positioned the dispensers on the site, so if a car is fueling at one of the dispensers, a car could get around. Uh, the car that's stationary, whether it's on the right side or the left side of the dispensers. That was also a, a, a discussion point. Um, going to the front of the site, we have a decorative wall with some landscaping in front of that wall. Also a part of the discussions uh, with the preservation commission. And in addition, we added uh, some marked. Uh, pedestrian walkways, uh, so pedestrians coming from East Avenue would have a designated marking. Where they could access the, the front of, of uh, our, our store. Um, we have uh, eleven parking spots on site. We have a uh, handicap parking spot that would be closest. Uh, to, to the, to, to the front door. Uh, we are also looking to um, have some decorative landscaping up at, at the front of the site. And this is really a ne- neighborhood convenience store. We, that's how we, we look at this um, site. It, it's a site that's gonna be servicing the existing neighborhood. It's not going to be a destination spot for uh. Anyone that, that's outside of the existing neighborhood. Um, we've also recently had a traffic study completed by SRF. And that study concluded that the trip generations using the current metrics uh, for the industry would not. Um, impact any of the existing roadways, so um, the access to the site. Um, through the, which will really be for the neighborhood, um, should, should be well used in a safe and efficient manner. Uh, I know it's been a long evening for everyone and I know my presentation was brief, uh, but. Uh, I know it's been a long evening for everyone and I know my presentation was brief, uh, but I'd be happy to answer any questions or, or comments. And, and as Jerry said, we have John Chiraba, our engineer and Ken Porelli, um, from Quickly's also with us this evening.
Thanks, Lou. Could, could I ask, um, when you, you, you did say it and I apologize now. This building, I believe the, the last owner or the last operator did have overhead doors and did, did do repair work is, do I have that right?
I believe so, Bill.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure if they, I thought they had doors. Now, in your application, you're, you're proposing that those would just be windows. They're not going to have doors that open.
Uh, that, that is correct. And that was really the, the natural, um, progression of our conversations with the Historic Preservation Commission, um, which really, um, pointed us to the direction of having the way those look as you're seeing them tonight.
Okay. Okay. And I guess I do, I, I can appreciate this building being refurbished and renovated, uh, to, to a very nice design. I don't believe the pumps that were out there before had a canopy though. Um, I don't recall a canopy being there.
That's correct.
And do you, with your conversation with the Historic Preservation Commission, they, they were okay with, uh, introducing the canopy in the front?
Yes, they were specifically with the design that we have in the renderings that you have in your package. Their main concern with the canopy was when we originally proposed three different dispensers, the size of the canopy. So when we went down to two dispensers, uh, obviously the canopy size was reduced and that, that's, that seemed to satisfy, uh, their concern.
Yeah, and that, and, and Bill, I'll, uh, this is Ken Gordon, I, I can confirm that. And Ramsey was at that HPC meeting as well. Um, the concern of the HPC was to reduce the size of the canopy so as to, um, enhance the visibility of the main landmark structure, uh, from the street. And, uh, and the Historic Preservation Commission has seen this design and, um, has, um, commented that it is, uh, favorably exposed to the design that you see tonight.
And, um, does Historic Preservation have any further review as this advances to preliminary, final site plan and A R B review?
Yeah, so I do not believe in Ramsey, correct me if I'm wrong on this. I do not believe that a certificate of appropriateness has yet been granted for this project. Uh, that would be, uh, something that would have to occur before the project could proceed. So a formal hearing for a certificate of appropriateness would need to, uh, take place. And that permission would have to be granted by HPC. Has, has that been granted, Ramsey? I just don't.
No, you handle it similar to the architectural review board. Uh, they're basically free to go see the Historical Preservation Commission with their application for a certificate of appropriateness at any time. It's usually done between the preliminary and final applications. But we're certainly going to want their concurrence and their approval before the planning board gets its final approval.
Okay, that was kind of where I was going with this is. And, and in this instance, does Historic Preservation trump, uh, an A R B approval or do they both have to approve?
No, A R B does not have to review it, um, the HPC, it's under the HPC's jurisdiction.
Just, HPC just acts instead of the A R B.
Thank you. Okay. Um, those were, those were my questions. Um, could I ask the board if, uh, actually, let's, what we tend to do, uh, Lou and Jerry with, uh, concept reviews is we kind of go around and just ask each of the, this isn't, uh, the same as the final site plan approval. We just kind of give you our opinions of, uh, elements of the pro, plan that we like or elements that we'd like to see modified. I guess I would go around and just ask folks to, you know, based on the renderings and the site plan, uh, do you have any, any comments, uh, for the applicant? I'm going to start, put Julie on the spot because she jumped up a few spaces and is sitting there first line.
I do not at the moment, I'd like that, that it was reduced to two, uh, stations and that, uh, pretty much covers what I was concerned about. At this time.
Yep. Uh, David Fader?
Um, no, I don't, I really don't have any concerns.
Okay.
Looks okay.
Yeah. All right, and, uh, John Zoski?
You have a question about the canopy. It has a fascia or mancered look to it that could be a roofing material. Um, would that material try to mimic the gable roof of the, of the building? Or would it be painted metal? What would, what would be the intent for that material? I'm curious.
The, the intent would be to match, uh, the building. That was part of our discussion with the Historic Preservation Committee, Commission that, that we would line those up.
Okay, all right, good. Cause I see that they, you mentioned a slate roof for the bill, an existing slate roof for the building. And, um, anyway, slate, I mean, slate's still available, obviously. It's expensive, but it's still out there. There was a, a question that, um, our town engineer made regarding the two employee parking spots. He thought it might be, if somebody pulled into those, you know, nose first on, in their car, might be difficult with them to, to back out safely and, and leave. Um, is there, and his question was, are those two spots really necessary? Or, or, um, anyway, that, that's, I guess for your, for your consideration. Now, you, you know how many spots you want to have for the, uh, for this facility and, and how, how you intend to use them. But if you take a look at those two spots, they are, they are, they are kind of awkward back in that corner near the dumpster.
Right?
We'll take a look at that and make sure the car can get in and out, we'll, we'll, we'll recheck that.
Yeah.
All right, Karen, do you have some?
I appreciate, I appreciate the update on the conversations with, uh, Historic Preservation Commission because my question was how we could think about the canopy in relationship to the visibility of that lovely building. So, um, I'm glad to hear that the number of dispensers has been reduced and that the overall size of the canopy, uh, is smaller than originally. And if it can be done even more, that would be a great thing because the building is really lovely. That was my main concern at this point.
Thank you. Uh, Jason?
I, I like it so far. I think, uh, I like that it's a nice reuse of the site and the building. Um, I, you know, I appreciate the Historical Preservation Commission's, uh, concern about the seeing it through the canopy. I, I, again, I, I don't really have anything. I think it's a nice job so far.
Thank you. Pam?
Yeah, I like it as well. I can get, um, I think it's a nice design. My only concern, I guess, is the sidewalks a little bit dangerous looking. It's sort of like a walk behind every car pulling out sidewalk. Um, but I don't know, I don't know what a better op, I don't have a better option, but it's just a little frogger, frogger feeling, like dodging cars as you're walking on the sidewalk, but I don't know, um, otherwise, otherwise I like it. I think it's, I think it's a nice design and I think it's a good reuse of that building.
I'm going to ask a question here. This is Ken, I'm with, uh, Quickly's and from a, a, a board perspective, I'm curious what the thoughts would be. And, and I agree with you, um, Karen, uh, or I'm sorry, Pam, whoever asks that question about the sidewalks. I, I, I agree. You know, what we're trying to do is identify, um, you know, the best and safest routes for pedestrians to come from the sidewalk on East Ave to, to the building, um, or bicyclists, um, if that's the case. I'm, I'm curious if, if there's a feeling that maybe just having that identified, um, hatched kind of sidewalk leading from the sidewalks on East Ave on the, on the south or bottom closest to, um, the Friendly Home or, or the school and eliminate the hatched walks that does lead behind seven vehicles. Obviously, there's going to be less, um, potential for cars backing in and out of the two spaces on the, uh, southern part of the building there. Would, would that be a sufficient solution in the board's opinion? Um, or do you prefer to see, you know, this U-shaped sidewalk pattern? Um, I'm, I'm curious as we go into, you know, a more formal design for our application, if that is determined necessary. And you brought up a good point, so thank you.
Um, yeah, I mean, I can't fully answer that. I just think that leaving people behind like that close behind a parked car is a little dangerous. I don't, I don't know. I think, you know, I thought, well, maybe you could just cut in from the center of the property, straight through the gas pumps. I don't know if that's any safer. Um, I, I don't know. I don't know if it's necessary either to hatch it. It just feels like hatching it and telling people to walk behind these cars pulling in and out seems like more dangerous than not hatching anything at all. I don't know. I don't know what the answer is.
I've been, similarly, I've been sitting here thinking, you know, we're, we're, we're actually putting people maybe, maybe in more harm's way. You know, could you just do the, the south side? I guess it's the, you know, it would be the south side. Coming from where there's probably more residents, uh, you know, you got the fire hall next to you. Tough call, um, maybe for, uh, another, a look would be to put a couple of cars as if they're lined up at the pumps and see where you're likely to have vehicles at any one time. Uh, and I know that varies wildly from type of vehicle to type of driver and how close they get to the pump and all that. But I, I do wonder, maybe not through the center of the canopy, but across the front of the canopy. Um, and, you know, so you're coming in at an angle to the sidewalk, but you're, you're coming more from this, from the center of the site rather than the people buying parked cars and I don't know.
Well, I, I understand what you're asking and, and I think we could lay that out just to see how it looks.
Yeah, just, yeah, just try it.
Yeah, sure.
You know, and in a, in another circumstance, in, instead of a hatch pattern, it looks kind of like a zipper or a railroad track. Just a solid white line, not line, but a band representing, you know, the pathway. Um, not sure I've ever seen that on a, on a commercial site, but you know, it's, it's worth investigating and it's, it's laudable that, you know, pedestrians and cyclists are being taken into account.
It, it's, it's a fair observation and, and I, I have some ideas what we could do to, 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 to see if that would work out well.
Okay. Yeah. Uh, and I, I think everybody else has, has chimed in. I, I, um, I concur, this is a good reuse. And again, the extent that you can minimize the, the elevation and of the, of the canopy with, you know, minimizing structural steel sizes and depth of the canopy above, um, you know, I, I will acquiesce certainly to the Historic Preservation folks, but I would just say you've minimized it footprint. See if you can minimize it in, in elevation as well. But understand that you need it and, and why you need it.
We'll take a look.
All right, I do, I do want to give the board, um, and staff, uh, one more shot at this. Uh, anybody, the dads thoughts that, uh, wanted to contribute?
Do you long time plan out to outreach to the surrounding neighbors?
It's not, it's not a, what I refer to as a coherent neighborhood at this point, uh, that we're dealing with. Um, so we didn't have any direct plans to deal with it. Obviously, our immediate neighbors would get notice of, of any actions that we have. Um, I personally talked to someone who's on Noelwood, not far from, uh, not far from East Avenue. They had no concerns relative to it.
No?
What's our, Ramsey, what's our typical radius for notification? Five hundred feet? You're on mute.
Uh, just the budding or across the street? But we would not be outreach to the, to their residential neighbors in the, in the area.
And is Historic Preservation, uh, are those meetings advertised?
Yes, they are.
Yeah, it's a regular.
Say again, Ken?
It's a regular public hearing.
It is.
Published, yeah, it'll be published in the Daily Record and.
Okay. So there's, there's mechanisms for both boards, uh, actions to be publicized and.
Yeah, the, the properties, uh, bill will also be posted with a public hearing sites.
Yes, good, okay. All right. All right. And Lou, one last thought is if you would just see exactly how much space you need uh, for folks to pull up to the gas pump and then to bypass, um, on that street side is what I think you're, you're looking at there.
We, we, we have the room, we'll demonstrate it on a plan so everyone could see it.
Okay. All right. I, I, I thought you did have the room. I just, let's, let's, if we can reduce a few square feet of pavement, fine. If what you need for proper circulation, I don't know that we know where the, you know, trucks are pulling in and you probably need, uh, some space for the trucks, uh, loading or unloading, uh, fuel and where the, where the tanks are. Um, so if you need all that space, fine. Uh, I think you've got landscape, uh, solutions here, but if we can reduce a little bit of pavement, can't hurt.
We'll take a look.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just, uh, comment on that, on your, this is John Chiraba with Land Tech. Um, the current site plan, we've actually reduced the, the pavement by about fifteen hundred square feet so far. Um, but we will look at that and I will look at that, uh, those two employee spots worked with, uh, Lou and Ken on if those are required or maybe just one, and if we might lose some more pavement up there. So we'll be looking into that.
Appreciate it, thank you. All right. Folks, uh, hope you've received some feedback that is helpful and, um, proceed with your application. Thank you for bringing it and, uh, we look forward to seeing your preliminary and final, uh, supplemental.
Thank you for the feedback.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, moving on, uh, to our old business, uh, we have, uh, U of R. Uh, this is application twelve P N B one dash twenty one, uh, application of the University of Rochester. Preliminary site plan approval, preliminary EPOD for a woodlot permit approval and preliminary conditional use permit, uh, approval for their sixty one thousand square foot, uh, three story addition at the, uh, laser light laboratory, laboratory for laser energetics. I never, I guess I never understood, I thought it was laser light lab or something. Uh, so the L L E. Um, Jeff, you want to kind of kick us off on this? There's nowhere, kind of what we're looking at tonight?
Uh, they, they submitted some additional, some comments to, some questions, um. Uh, they they submitted some additional some comments to some questions. Um, and I know there were the initial conservation easement had been invited to the staff and that we are we are reviewing it. Um, I think I know that's that's kind of in process of it. Okay, the public, the public hearing was closed, so I'm not I'm not sure. How I want to handle that.
Well. No, so I think I would just uh I'm unless uh there's an objection from from you and or Ken, I'd I guess I'd let uh the applicant just update us on uh, additional materials submitted and and uh where you all uh leave there are still uh issues to be addressed. Um, I know David Cox and I I think uh Jared's out there. Is there one of you guys that would like to uh kind of lead the conversation for the U of R?
Yes, absolutely. I can. Good evening, board members. I'm David Cox with Pastoral Associates, the civil engineer for the project. Uh, just to kind of bring you up to speed, um, in the last submission, we did submit a revised site plans, which was majority of just revising those town comments. A lot of it had to do with just some modification to some notes, modification to some details. Uh, so really just kind of honing in on those finest, you know, those finishing touches, if you will, of those site plans. And then we did uh the response letter to all the town staff comments that we had. We submitted the updated water hydraulic calculations and the fire flow analysis. Uh, so from the uh last meeting, there was kind of three action items on my my plate, and that was uh, the updated water calculations, which we provided. Uh, the second one thing was the fire marshal to follow up with him to make sure he was all set with everything. Uh, so we have confirmed with the fire marshal that he is all set. His one condition, though, is that the West Henrietta uh road fire fire connection or water main connection uh gets completed and up and running before C of O, uh, which is not an issue there. Uh, so the fire marshal is all good. And then the conservation easement. I know the uh, the town, the town's attorney and uh U of R's attorney have been going back and forth and I and I feel that the the conservation easement is pretty darn close. It's really close to just being able to be finalized. I think there's some last few uh touches on that. Um, but yeah, so we're really really pretty close here and checking off the majority of of uh things.
Right.
Bill, uh, Jared, just briefly, I think, uh, I don't want to speak for Ken, but I know I've got some additional cap town comment verbiage back from him. I think we just need to do some title work for one of the exhibits. Uh, so I don't know if there's additional town uh comments. Ken, do you have any insight?
I had sent to you, uh, Jared, um, one final revision which had two word changes to paragraph two A of the conservation easement. I sent them last week sometime. Didn't get a response, um, but um, I need you to just take a look at them. Uh, some additional, if you will, condition conditional language, um, that the infrastructure work that would be allowed would be related facilities and underground infrastructure. Um, you had added ingrading, which is fine. Um, and so I just, I I need some feedback on that as to whether that's acceptable to the university. Um, I think I think we're all set. If that's the case, and then I know that um, the town engineer was just reviewing the legal description to make sure that everything closed properly for um, for that conservation easement. I do want to explain to the planning board because I do think this is new to the planning board. A couple of the modifications that you and I worked out are relative to that conservation easement. Um, when the conservation easement was first proposed, there were, if you will, three separate parcels or three separate conservation easement areas being proposed. We've consolidated that into one conservation easement. But um, ask the university to then designate hash marked areas on the map for uh future exception areas for future infrastructure installation to meet the university's uh future development uh uh needs for the property. Um, and then the other thing is that we talked about it. I know uh David Fader had expressed some concern. And I think someone else as well about what happens um, relative to modification or even extinguishment of this conservation easement uh, in the future. And we have uh inserted language which would uh allow for the modification or even extinguishment of the conservation easement in the future uh by the by a majority vote of the town board uh, upon the consent and advice of the uh of the planning board. Um, and and that's been inserted into the conservation easement as well to provide that needed uh flexibility if it arises in the future.
I I would think uh, again, one of the added exhibits was a list of the existing encumbrances on the property. And so the only thing to to me, aside from the engineers reviewing the the legal descriptions, is us getting the title work back to to provide a list that uh the the Ken was seeking of the existing encumbrances. So that's just a time necessary for the title company to review that back.
Right. I'm comfortable with where we are that, um, you know, if we had a a condition upon preliminary uh approval, um, that stated that the conservation easement would need to be presented and approved uh by the planning board uh prior to final approval, I think that would be adequate.
That was my next question. So uh, Jeff, are are you equally comfortable with any outstanding engineering issues or legal descriptions?
Um, yeah, I believe so. I mean, there's, I think there's a few things need to be worked out, but I think that they can be worked out between um, David and and our engineer.
I I will add one thing is that um, what will be important regarding the water system will be the review and sign off on these plans by Monroe County's Water Authority and the impacts it will have on the adjacent areas. Um, still needs to be reviewed by the uh before the town engineer will be able to sign those draws. So I would start that process, David, as soon as you can. Um, you can't start that process, unfortunately, too. They know where they are with us. Um, so um, that's the next big step because um, we're okay right now uh, with the negative declaration that I prepared for you um, based on uh at the intent of the findings uh, dealing with the water system and the utilities. I think it's uh, we're all feeling pretty comfortable. We've gotten the fire marshal to review it. He's fine with the fire access. Um, he has the one condition that David told you about. Um, needing the main to be constructed. It is going to be constructed because that's a water source. Um, so he's okay at this point. Now is the next step for them is to do the final engineering on on the get the conservation easement wrapped up. And uh, they got A R B. So I think we're in pretty good shape. Um, would be my my thoughts.
But you'd agree, Ramsey, nothing that would uh hold up preliminary?
Uh, no, and I would um also recommend the adoption of the negative declaration because I think at this point I went through that finding statement pretty well. And uh, I think we've addressed to the best of my ability, addressed it, looked at it and said, no, I think we're good uh, with the mitigation measures and the other mitigation measures that were part of the original approval take care of the other issues. So I think we're in pretty good shape.
Yeah, and I'd concur with that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so this is our public hearing is closed. Uh, the any members of the board have any further questions of either the applicant, Ken, or Jeff, or Ramsey? Uh, Julie, you you're.
No.
Okay, General Sowski?
No, no, no further questions.
David Fader?
I'm all set.
You, Karen?
No further questions.
All right, Jason?
I'm good.
All right, Pam?
I'm all set.
All right. Okay, um, I guess at this point, um, folks from the U of R will uh we're gonna circle back around to our first application and uh kind of go through our deliberations. Yeah, okay. Can we circle back, Jeff, to our first application? Uh, court fees. Two P O one twenty-two.
Yep.
Um, is there a motion to close the public hearing on this?
Our motion, we close the public hearing.
Okay.
One second.
Moved by Delaney, seconded by Altman. Is that right, or was it Julie?
Jason.
That was me.
Oh.
Okay. Moved moved and seconded to to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? All right, Jeff, please call the roll.
Altman? Price?
Hi.
Fader?
Hi.
Wasowski?
Hi.
Ben Cox, finer?
Hi.
Delaney?
Nay.
Ford?
Hi.
Is that everybody?
Yeah.
All right. All right, let's see. Do we we?
Wait, was that just to close the hearing?
Yeah.
Oh, that was an I. Sorry, I totally messed that up. It's really past my bedtime.
Okay.
Indeed.
Just want to keep this meeting going. Can we keep the hearing open? Sorry, Jeff.
The motion, the motion to uh close the public hearing carried Jeff, correct?
Yeah, yeah, by all members.
All right. Okay, let's uh, let's see. We've got a anybody that wishes to make a motion on this application?
Um, before we proceed with that, Bill, um, I just had a couple of comments before the motion was made. I was looking over the conditions, um, and I know typically the motion would incorporate the conditions. There's two conditions I'm concerned about and I just want to have this discussion with the board and Jeff and Ramsey. Um, one is uh a condition that I saw in here. It's at condition number eighteen. All uses shall take place within an enclosed building. I don't believe that we heard the applicant say that all uses would take place within an enclosed building. In fact, I think I heard the applicant say that the technicians would typically drive the vehicles up and down um a street to whether it's uh West Henrietta Road or or um Center Drive uh to test out their vehicles. And then it goes on to say noise and fumes shall be controlled so they don't create a nuisance for the surrounding neighborhood. Again, I'm not sure that I heard the applicant really um, say that would be done. So I I just raised that and uh, if you impose that condition, I'm not sure how the applicant intends to meet that condition. And then the the other condition actually is condition number one, which is that motorcycle service shall be accessory to motorcycle sales. It it seemed to me from the description that uh, by the applicant that motorcycle service uh, would be at least an equal use with sales, um, not just an accessory use. And and I even thought I heard the applicant say that the primary purpose for this additional building would be to provide additional service area, not additional sales area. So I I raised that. I don't know what to do about those. Uh, Jeff or Ramsey is to those conditions. Um, I just think it would be problematic if the conditional use permit were granted with those conditions, given what we've heard from the applicant.
Yeah, I think that eighteen would if it was going to be granted eighteen with a being within an enclosed building would would not be like a feasible condition to place on it as presented. One, I think, um, I'm not sure. I mean, I think that it seems like he's buying a lot of the vehicles to sell. And it did sound like a a lot of the services being done is after like the initial buying is kind of I heard that a little bit. But it does seem like both will be taking place. I don't know the ratio.
I I I do have an opinion. Um, I I know the, because I had um, the small engine sales definition pulled up too. My thought is to table the application and give him an opportunity to address these concerns. Uh, give him an opportunity to say, where is he going to test those motorcycles? Give him an opportunity to tell me he's going to keep those doors closed. That all the activities other than test driving would be conducted indoors in a fully enclosed building. Um, he also needs to uh explain his uh sales versus the repair. Get a little clarity on that. Um, would be my thoughts. Um, I would agree with him that um he's always done a pretty good job here in the town of Brighton. He's always been pretty responsive uh to us. Um, so I would like to give him an opportunity um, to see if he can address it. Uh, but I at this time I have to agree with Ken um, that his testimony does have conflicts with what he's supposed to be doing there. He's not actually operating it to the code.
So you're these conditions that Ken brought up are directly related to a portion of the code?
Yeah, the the small ones and repairs is that the the they shall be accessory, the repair should be accessory to the sales.
Yeah, condition number one definitely is a code issue. Condition eighteen um, addresses really the problems and comments that were raised by the neighbors, but also goes to compliance with um, the town's noise ordinance. Uh, and if you're going to impose that condition, I just don't want to see the board ever adopt a condition that the board knows from day one is not going to be complied with by the applicant.
Yep.
So Ken, if we've got another motorcycle shop up the street doing essentially the same thing. And they're running down West Henrietta Road to test out their repairs, how does how does that square with, you know, this application?
I hear you, Bill, but uh, my point is not that they shouldn't be allowed to test motorcycles on West Henrietta Road. My point is is that the board um should not impose a condition that says everything, all uses shall be interior unless the applicant thinks he can do that. And maybe that condition needs to be rewritten to say that all uses other than technicians testing vehicles need to be enclosed in the building. Um, and that the test vehicle, the testing of vehicles needs to only be conducted on West Henrietta Road, or some something along those lines. Um, I I don't want to be too presumptuous here in drafting a condition that the board wants to impose or that staff recommends, but I don't want to see the board adopt a condition. or that staff recommends, but I don't want to see the board adopt a condition that we know the applicant does not intend to follow.
And this would be the first time that the applicant has actually seen these conditions.
Right.
Yeah.
So I think Ramsey's idea of tabling it and allowing the applicant to address those issues would be helpful. Of course, we did just vote to close the public hearing, but we could reopen for that purpose or table for specifically proof on those two items.
Well. It, it does, it does seem that he needs the opportunity to address these, these conditions and see, you know, how, how close can we come to compliance with them or which things are just operationally not practical for him so that we understand what those are and what the impacts to the neighborhood could be. Understanding that I see advantages in this application where we're reusing, we're adaptively reusing an existing building. And so from that standpoint, there are benefits to the application. But I'd like to give the applicant an opportunity to, to see these you know, get a response from him so that we can tailor these, these conditions to what is achievable. Okay. That said, could we? Could I ask someone to make a motion and hopefully someone that's got the the draft report open because I, I can't seem to get it open here. David, could you turn on your, your speaker? You're, you're still on mute.
Can we unmute him?
Somebody unmute him, please.
Brendan?
No, we can unmute. All I can do is.
Okay, I'm unmuted now.
There you go.
Okay, I move the board reopens the hearing on application two P zero one twenty-two. And that the board tables the application two P zero one twenty-two based on testimony given and plans submitted. And the two additional pieces of information outlined in the planning board report, I requested to make a determination of significance and to have a complete application.
The motion, is there a second?
This is John. I'll second that.
Second by O S. Further comments, questions on the motion in the second? All right, Jeff, do you mind calling the roll?
Ford.
Hi.
Masowski.
Hi.
Ben Cox signer.
Hi.
Delaney.
Hi, sorry.
Fader.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Altman.
Hi.
Okay. Thank you, and John Cortez, if you're out there, you should get this so you have the conditions of the tabling resolution in the next few days.
And Bill, I would be glad to speak with John further about the concerns that we discussed because I don't think he's on. I don't, I don't think he heard the discussion, so.
All right.
I will relay that to him, might be helpful for him.
That'd be great, thanks.
Jeff, you can join me on that too, all right?
Yeah.
So we can keep track of it.
All right, thank you guys. Next application is three P O one twenty-two. Application of nineteen twenty-five South Clinton LLC for preliminary final site plan approval for phase two. And the conditional use permit approval allowing the retail building to house a twenty-three hundred square foot Starbucks cafe. Okay. I guess, do we want to have a motion on closing the public hearing?
I, aren't we going to table this one?
Well. We might as well have the conversation about it. I, I do. What, what do we think we would be accomplishing with a table? I can see both. I, I see the argument, you know, it seems like we have kind of two, two issues that if, if the stockpiles of materials weren't there and that was off the table as a, as an issue. I don't, I don't know that I heard anything that would say that this needs to be continue to be tabled or to table.
There, there's some things, I mean, it still needs architecture review board approval. And the, the building footprint that they submitted for the architecture review board is different than the ones submitted for this plan because of the timing of it. So, so what they're presenting is going to be, what's going to be the final approval of the architecture review board approves it? It's going to be a little bit different than what they submitted for this application.
Okay. And is it an absolute that we have to have ARB approval prior to final site plan?
Yeah, because we're going to have to check the sidewalk with around that building depending on its configuration, Bill. And we, there was a conflict with the ARB. I, I hope it's resolved. I believe Paul's made a good effort to resolve it. That's going to be heard Tuesday, and there, there's some, just some house cleaning that needs to be done. And two, the ARB is an important part of this.
Understood. I, okay.
I, I just want to add to, I believe I heard the applicant say that they anticipated that they would be coming back to this board at the earliest in April. So that they, I, I think the applicant's expecting that this board is not going to make final approval tonight.
So we did call to tell him that the footprints weren't matching up. My, my thought is it can be worked out. We didn't talk about it during the meeting. We did call Paul Calucci before this, when we realized, but at that point, we were too late in the process.
Is there any advantage to making the approval for preliminary?
I'm, I'm not sure. I'm not sure it's going to get us, we, we typically don't even make preliminary without ARB, but
Okay.
My, my only point to, both to Ken and Ramsey and the board is for better or for worse, I can see both sides of this equation where mobilizing a site contractor to work on, you know, both the the site work for the proposed building and site improvements as well as, you know, moving your, moving your dirt. And in, you know, replacing the, the sub base down. At one point, I, I'm not sure I see the advantage in, in holding you know, the, the construction of the, the Whole Foods until, I'm sorry. My apologies, the Starbucks until those piles are gone. I, I certainly think there's going to be incentive from the developer's side to get up, get this site as clean as possible when, when Starbucks does plan to open as well as getting additional tenants. I might ask, I do see Paul is, is still on, is maybe a Gantt chart or just a, a brief of, you know, project schedule that kind of gives us some idea of how these things can, can run in parallel. Both the site work and, and the removal and placement of stone. Removal of topsoil and the placement of stone. Just so that, that we can say, look, once it's dry enough and we're not tracking mud up and down the road. We're going to get this and this, that's done. And here's the sequence it's going to get done in. I, I wouldn't mind seeing that, just, just because that is an important condition. Understood, there's been reasons why it's not been done, but it does seem that, you know, we, we do need to get the site cleaned up.
And I think we could condition the, like the CFO on the site being cleaned up. So that Starbucks can't go in and operate until, until the site, the site has been cleaned.
Well, and, and Jeff.
We want to wait that long. We don't want to wait that long.
I think, I think we could also and, and I think this is a good reason to table for a month. Work on a condition that would effectively revoke the conditional use permit if the site topsoil is not removed by a date that the applicant is willing to commit to. And whatever that date is, under the code, we do have the ability to require the developer to come back in for renewal of a conditional use permit at any time we wish. And make sure that they're progressing and doing, in meeting the conditions that this board sets. So to include, you know, in whatever that final approval might be a condition that says those, the topsoil piles need to be removed, even if it is later on in the construction season when things are dry and it's possible for them to get in there. Would give some leverage to this board to make sure that that work is done by a date that they commit to. And that we can hold it, hold them to.
Yeah, there is the ability to put a timeframe on the conditional use where they'll have to renew it or we can revoke it. So I agree with Ken. That is a way of handling it.
All right. Well, I I guess I'm, I'm prepared to move forward with a, a table resolution. Is there anyone that cares to make that motion?
I'll move the board tables the application three P zero one twenty-two based on the testimony given in the plan submitted. And that the twenty-seven items of additional information outlined in the planning board report are supplied so that we can make a determination of significance and have a complete application.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Altman, second. Any further discussion? All right, Jeff, please call the roll.
Altman.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Fader.
Hi.
Delaney.
Hi.
Ben Cox signer.
Hi.
Masowski.
Hi.
Ford.
Hi.
Application has been tabled.
Okay. All right, application three P zero two, two Bright Future Realty Group. And the applicant did not have a representative tonight, sort of motion to table this application?
Table it for representation at the next planning board meeting.
I'll move, we table the application pending representation from the applicant at the next planning board meeting.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? It's called roll.
Ford.
Hi.
Masowski.
Hi.
Ben Cox signer.
Hi.
Delaney.
Hi.
Fader.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Altman.
Hi.
Application's stable.
All right, thank you. Application three P O three twenty-two. Application of Winton Acquisitions LLC and the Old Farm Cafe for a conditional use permit. This is at one of the spaces at Winton Place thirty-five, I'm sorry, thirty-four fifty Winton Place. I would make a motion to close the public hearing for this application.
Second.
Ford seconds. Any discussion? Jeff, please call the roll.
Ford.
Hi.
Masowski.
Hi.
Ben Cox signer.
Hi.
Delaney.
Hi.
Fader.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Altman.
Hi.
Public hearing's closed.
All right. Does anyone want to make a motion for this application?
Yeah, I'll move that the planning board finds that the proposed actual will not have a significant impact on the environment. And that the planning board adopts a negative declaration prepared by town staff. The, and that the application, what's the number on this one? Three P zero three twenty-two. Be approved based on the testimony given, plans submitted and the twelve conditions outlined in the planning board report.
I'll second. All right, moved and seconded on acquisitions LLC and Old Farm Cafe. Any further discussion? All right, Jeff, please call the roll.
Altman.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Fader.
Hi.
Delaney.
Hi.
Ben Cox signer.
Hi.
Masowski.
Hi.
Fader. Or Ford.
Hi.
Application is approved.
Excuse me, I, my iPad is running out of juice, so I have to run and get a charger, so excuse me, I'll be gone for a few seconds.
All right. Okay, moving on to application three P O four twenty-two. Daniele SPC LLC for a conditional use permit to approve Jersey Mike's Sub Shop at twenty-seven fifty Monroe Avenue.
I would like an opportunity to review with staff the letters submitted by Mr. Malcolm and work on the seeker issues and specific findings for the board to consider relative to this conditional use application. So I would ask if the board was so inclined to table this for that purpose.
Ken, what, what do you see as any any issues that might, might arise out of communications or things that you may, may discuss?
I just think it's important that we, we just got this letter today. And I just think, given the sensitivity of this project, that we make sure that we cross our Ts and dot our Is before the board takes action.
I concur.
Okay. I guess as, as long I, I guess as, as long as we, you know, we, we address this and we don't, uh, get held up by a letter that flies in at five o'clock on, you know, uh, you know, five minutes before our next meeting. Um, after you've.
I, I would recommend that the board vote to close the public hearing. I don't think there's any need for any additional testimony or submissions. This is just for review of counsel.
Internally.
That's right.
I'll move to close the public hearing then. For Al's second. Moved and seconded to close the hearing.
Who seconded?
Jason. Any further discussion on closing the hearing? Jeff, please call the roll.
Altman?
Hi.
Bryce?
Hi.
Vader?
Hi.
Delaney?
Hi.
Brad Cox signer?
Hi.
Masowski?
Hi.
Ford?
Hi.
Public hearing is closed.
Okay. Could someone make a tabling motion? Don't have the staff or.
I'll do it. I move that application 3PO 422 be tabled based on the testimony given and plans submitted. Additional information is requested in order to make a determination of significance and to have a complete application.
We have a second.
Go ahead.
I'll second it.
Thank you, David. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, Jeff, please call the roll.
Altman?
Hi.
Bryce?
Hi.
Vader?
Hi.
Delaney?
Hi.
Brad Cox signer?
Hi.
Masowski?
Hi.
Ford?
Hi.
Application has been tabled.
All right. Okay, so in our new business, 10PNB 1 uh, dash 20. We don't really have, do we have to take any action on that?
No. Posted by the applicant.
It was postponed by the applicant. Okay. All right. And then 2PNB 122 uh, Bristol Valley Homes and P E M M, they have our permits. Do they get those, Jeff, in, in some written format as well, or they're just taking what they heard tonight and moving?
They're, they have the engineering comments from the reports that were put up online.
All right. Okay. Okay, so that will proceed presumably to a preliminary application. Uh, that brings us back to the application in University of Rochester. Uh, 12PNB 121. We have not made any motions on this, so we, we would want to start by closing the public hearing.
We closed it, I think.
I apologize. I apologize. Says it right there, doesn't it?
No, it gets confusing, Bill. It's all right.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks.
I'm, I moved I moved the board adopts a negative declaration prepared by town staff and the board grants preliminary approval of the application 12PNB 1-21 based on testimony given, plans submitted in the 27 conditions.
Neg deck.
I did that. It was in there.
Neg deck was in there was a conditional use in there?
No.
Uh, can we, can we add all that together, Ken and Ramsey? We, do we have to approve?
Yes, you can, you can do it all in one motion.
Okay. David, could you amend the motion to include?
Yes, okay. So I'll amend that to also approve the conditional use.
And, and did you say the preliminary EPOD approval?
No, and the preliminary EPOD, EPOD approval.
All right. Now we've got them all in.
I missed those two.
Good job, Bill.
Is there a, is there a second?
I'll second.
Jason, one. All right. Moved and seconded. Further discussion? I, I do believe we understand the issues that are going to need some adjustments and edits and refinement for final. But on behalf of the board, thank you all for working through this and getting this project moving forward. All right, uh, Jeff, please call the roll.
Yes. Altman?
Hi.
Bryce?
Hi.
Vader?
Hi.
Delaney?
Hi.
Brad Cox signer?
Hi.
Masowski?
Hi.
Ford?
Hi.
Application has been preliminarily approved.
All right, thank you.
My brain was overwhelmed by putting in the word preliminary.
Yeah. It's rare we do that. All right, uh, Jeff, what do we, we got one, the one sign application?
Yep.
Okay. This is on Brighton, Henry and Town Line, right?
Yep, 1815 Brighton, Henry and Town Line Road. They're looking approval for two, two, um, two building faces, which was previously approved and they've had signs on two building faces, so it didn't require variance.
And the ARB approved that, is that it?
Correct.
Okay. I move approval as approved, as presented and approved by the ARB for application uh, 1637 Helio Health.
I'll second.
Thanks, Pam. Seconded, uh, Jeff, go ahead and please call the roll.
Altman?
Hi.
Bryce?
Hi.
Vader?
Hi.
Delaney?
Hi.
Brad Cox signer?
Hi.
Masowski?
Hi.
Ford?
Can I say I don't love there's no chickens? Hi. It's getting late for me.
The application has been approved.
All right. Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you to all of our participants tonight. Appreciate your patience and the long meeting.
Everyone, thank you. Appreciate everyone's effort.
Thank you all.
Have a good one, folks.
Bye bye.
Good night.
One more. One more and I'm done.
All right.
Hey, uh, hey, Bill, I won't be here next month in April. Um, I'm having, I'm